Good evening, welcome to the April seventeenth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district website. I am now calling the meeting to order at seven seventeen P M. Ms. Chides, can you please call the official role for this evening's meeting?
Student Director Caitlin Lau is here, just in with the dais. Director Jennifer Shinoski. Director Laura Babbitt, here. Director Mike Chang.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
President.
Presidenta Navasudev.
Presente.
Thank you, Ms. Chires.
Student Director Caitlin Lau is online, sorry.
She's online, virtually, yes. It's good, thank you. Hi, Student Director, welcome.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Chires, we will now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any requested changes, colleagues? Seeing no requested changes, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended? As without the annual amendments?
I move to do so.
Moved by Director Chang.
A second.
Seconded by Director Shinoski. I think we have to call the role, right, Ms. Chires, because Student Director is online. Ms. Chires, can you call the role?
Yes, Student Director Caitlin Lau.
Yes.
Director Jennifer Shinoski.
Yes.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Mike Chang. Vice President Kadija Brown.
Yes.
President Anavasudev.
Yes. We will now report from our closed session. Vice President Brown, please report out from this evening's closed session.
Good evening, everyone. This evening's April seventeenth meeting, a closed session began at five forty-five P M. For item three point one point one, the board heard an update. For item three point one point two, Director Vasudev recused herself. It was moved by Director Shinoski and seconded by Director Babbitt. And all directors voted in favor. For item three point one point three, the board heard an update. And for item three point two, for item one, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item two, the motion to approve the staff recommendation was made by Vice President Brown and seconded by Director Shinoski, and all board directors voted in favor. For item three point three point one, the motion was made by Director Chang and seconded by Director Shinoski. And for item three point four, the board heard an update. This ends the report form close session, thank you.
And then for item three point three point one, all directors voted in favor, so it wasn't in the notes. Great, thank you, Vice President Brown. And we'd like to also congratulate our newest principal Gabriel Fredman, who's here with his family this evening, Principal Fredman. They're very excited for the, for our district and for the Thousand Oaks community, thank you for being here. And now we will hear from our Superintendent Nikia Fornmoto.
Good evening, B U S D family, I promise you this time I will be brief. First of all, I just want to join you all one more time in celebrating and welcoming. Gabe, in his new role as Principal of Thousand Oaks, I had the privilege of, I have had the privilege of seeing his amazing work, hearing from the community about the work that he does and continues to do, and I'm so looking forward to him doing it in this new capacity as Principal of Thousand Oaks Elementary School. You know, every day here in B U S D, we work to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence, to make positive contributions to the world. And we do this work in a number of different ways. We're always thinking about how do we set up our students to realize all of their brilliance and they're amazing. And what we know and what research confirms is that those transition years are critical. And so I was very excited to be a part of B U S D's Transition Fair this past Saturday at King Middle School. We had over, oh, there we go, King Middle School. We had over a hundred and forty-eight fifth and eighth graders from Berkeley Unified come out on a Saturday, y'all. They were there early morning and stayed till the late afternoon. They were able to learn about middle school and high school, all of our middle schools and B H S, as well as B T A and our Independent Studies Program. They learned about programs and supports that we have to support their transition. They were exposed to clubs, classes, and met the people who are there, who are going to make sure they are successful in their transitions. I've never seen a bunch of fifth and eighth graders so excited to be with their parents on a Saturday, but they were. It was so fun to see a number of folks engage with our Universal Nine math teachers. They were actually doing math on a Saturday with their parents and caregivers and laughing and having fun. It was probably the best for me to see our Board Director Babbitt struggle to get the, oh, you were struggling, she was struggling. But so much fun just to see our students engaged and our families engaged and to see examples of all the amazing supports and resources we have for our students, both at the middle school level and the high school level. I actually heard that a number of our students couldn't stop talking about it, such that news got back to the schools. And I want to let y'all know that our fifth and our eighth graders are excited and ready for their transition, and we are ready for them as well. I think you were there too, Hazmic. I also want to let you know that there's a number of things happening in our district, both this month and next month, that I wanted to make sure to share with you. All of our families are invited to attend the Second Annual B U S D Climate Fair. It's a celebration of student learning around climate literacy. This year's fair will take place on Saturday, April twentieth, from ten A M. to two P M. In the Longfellow Middle School Cafeteria. The Climate Fair is a non-competitive showcase of middle school and upper elementary projects that explore the themes of climate change science, solutions, and climate justice, the core pieces of B U S D's climate literacy resolution. So come on out and celebrate Earth Day, it's actually on April twenty-second, and B U S D's climate literacy program. In addition to the project showcase, the event will include hands-on activities for all ages, bike repair, music, food, we love food, and prizes, so we hope to see you all there. The students of Willard's Asian and Pacific Islander Club would love our community to come out for the twenty twenty-four Night Market taking place on Friday, April twenty-sixth, from six to eight P M. at Willard Middle School. There will be student-led stalls, games, art activities, merchandise for sale, and yes, food. Meals are going to be sold for ten dollars. We stay busy here in B U S D, so I'll let you know that there will be a cultural celebration at Sylvia Mendez Elementary School on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eleven thirty to two thirty P M. It will also include, what do you think? Food, music, activities, and performances. Everyone is encouraged to showcase a culture that is important to you. Also, we're preparing for our literacy community listening session number two, so we're doing take two. We're hosting this Second Literacy Community Listening Session on Monday, May thirteenth, at Malcolm X Elementary School from five thirty to seven P M. Childcare begins at five thirty, and there will be food. And then from six to seven P M., participants will have the opportunity to hear about B U S D's literacy framework, learn about our B U S D curriculum review process, and the curriculums under consideration and provide feedback. Last thing for you all, I know that just two weeks ago, you were all watching my video, my April video. And in that April video, I talked about it being springtime. It is still springtime, but we know that many of you are getting ready for summer. So I wanted to highlight for you all that our summer programs is up on our website and registration has began. We have a number of amazing programs this summer for our students of all ages. Our summer programs really seek to focus on recreation, academics, enrichment, and empowerment. We have classes and camps that provide learning recovery, academic intervention, grade-level skill reinforcement, social-emotional learning, and of course, community, social interaction, and fun. Camps include things like our two-way immersion program camp, our STEM and maker camps with even costume design. Y'all know how to make costume, costume, this is Berkeley, costume design, y'all don't excited? Okay. There's also writing and math and much, much more. So please check out our website to learn about the many programs that we have and find out how to get your babies signed up. And we will have more information about summer programs, camps, both in B U S D and our city as time goes on. I thank you all for being here, I hope you stay the duration of our meeting as we have a number of really important topics on our agenda. And with that, President, I'm done.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will now move on to the public comments component of our agenda. Before we begin, I would like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating, or participating in any physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dais without permission. As Ms. Chides has already explained, there are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You can also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during the public comment period. However, board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speakers after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We will designate twenty minutes to our in-person comments. This will be followed by ten minutes for any speakers online. Anyone online who wishes to make public comments should raise their virtual hand now so Ms. Chides can organize. If you're online, please indicate S next to your name so that I know you are a student and we'll call on you first. Each public commenter will have up to one minute to speak, depending on the amount of speakers. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's allotted time, so time your comments accordingly. I will call your name in the order of speakers per agenda item. To keep things moving, I'd like to ask the speaker who's next in line to come forward and wait near the mic. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, please repeat your name at the beginning of the comment period so I can pronounce it correctly. And we'll now move on to in-person public comments, so I'm going to start with our students. We have Sydney Fair, followed by Emma, and then Samantha Garcia Mendoza. So Sydney and Emma. And each speaker will have one minute.
Hello, Directors. My name is Sydney Fair, and I am speaking on behalf of gender-expansive youth activists, as well as all of the trans kids who cannot pee at Berkeley High School. We have spoken at a considerable majority of these school board meetings. You know this, you're probably tired of us by now, but we are still here. It has been over eight months, and nothing, nothing physical has changed. Because I am trans at Berkeley High, because I can't pee at my school, I can't focus, and I fear for my health. I am scared. We are scared. We don't feel safe, and often we don't feel heard. We need something physical to change. Please, we need it now, not some hypothetical future, but now, thank you.
Okay, next we have, next we have Emma, followed by Samantha Garcia Mendoza, and then Martin, Marcelle Metal.
Hi, Directors. First off, Superintendent, I really appreciate your continued dedication to this community to being willing to speak in front of Congress and say that you support, you stand with our schools. I really appreciate it. And all Directors, I really appreciate that you've begun to have these conversations with us about how we can move forward for trans students at Berkeley High. But just, we need something physical to change, we're running out of school year. We've been pushing really hard for this all year. And I think just that's something we'd all feel really good about as a community. Thanks for your continued support.
Thank you. Next we have Samantha Garcia Mendoza, followed by Martin Marcelle Metal, and then Davida Johnson-Birdan.
Hello, my name is Samantha Garcia, and I am one of the co-presidents of the Puente Club. When I first started high school, I thought I would never have an impact on my small school. And that sentiment stayed with me because I got into A C. But when I got into Puente, that helped me realize that I have more opportunities available to me as a student in A C. For example, I had never thought I would be in a leadership position and be going abroad through the resources that they have provided me. Not only that, the staff is just as equally as amazing as its resources. For example, they would stay with me almost every day in my sophomore year from three thirty to five P M. Throughout my time in Puente, I've seen me and my peers mature and grow, thank you.
Next, Martine, followed by Davida.
Hello, everybody. I'm Martine, I'm also a co-president of the Puente Club and Program. Being part of Puente, at first, I didn't know exactly what I was getting into. I just knew it was a beneficial program for people who look like me and who come from a similar background. Although during my time in the program, I soon realized how beneficial it truly was. Being in such a tight-knit community helped provide a more comfortable work environment, and attending college visit field trips and college and career path workshops has really helped me figure out my vision for my life. Not only that, but the program helped encourage me to give back to my community in ways such as tutoring other puenteistas and encouraging me to apply for senior class president, which I was recently elected for. I wouldn't be the person I am today without Puente, thank you.
Hello, my name is Davier Johnson-Birdan, and I'm a part of the Puente Program. I'm also a treasurer of the Puente Club. My experience in Puente has seen me grow in ways I could never imagine. I have seen growth in my leadership, my confidence in, I don't like to get over that, over my two years. With the support of my teachers and my counselors, I've become an entrepreneur and designer, creating over ten posters and logos to help support my goals in Puente and my fellow puenteistas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Ariana Coronel Suazo, followed by Taz Noem Steele.
Hi, hello, my name is Ariana, I'm the Vice President of the Puente Club and R I student. The reason I joined Puente was because I wanted to do a good on my college applications. But I ended up, I ended up with so much more than that, it turned into such a good community that I really appreciate, and I feel like I've learned a lot from. I enjoyed it so much that I tried to incorporate it into other parts of my community that I try to affiliate myself with, like Rise and Latinos Unidos. With that, it helped me learn, it helped me learn how to set up coalitions and connections with other clubs on campus. In my role in Rise, I do a research study with S F State on how to help students of color succeed. And in that research, I find that Puente checks a lot of those boxes for how we should help benefit our students of color. And that it helped me feel like I could accomplish more than just being some, like, random student who didn't have a lot to say or give input, and it gave me enough confidence when to come in front of the board and make sure that my programs, both of them, stayed input for as many years to come, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Taz Noem Steele, followed by Ruby Palmer-Gos.
Hello. Hello, my name is Taz Noem Steele Lindheimer, I'm a Jewish student at Berkeley High School. I went and did a one-week-long unit on the current conflict in Palestine. I'd like to say I did not feel that it was anti-Semitic or it did not equate the actions of any individual with, or a group of people, with any larger group of people. I have never seen a staff member do anything anti-Semitic, and I don't believe in these allegations. I was at both of the walkouts, and there was even counter protesters there, and there was no confrontation whatsoever. I thank you for listening to my speech.
Thank you. Next we have Ruby Palmer-Gos, followed by Jacqueline Kandura.
Good evening, my name is Ruby Palmer-Gos, and I teach at BAM, this is my ninth-year teaching. Teachers educate children and support and engage families to build our community. In order to do this well, we need support from the district to retain educators who are not forced to give up their own life opportunities to continue this important work. Teaching in Berkeley with our current wages means commuting from far away or renting small apartments and never being able to buy a home here. Our salaries do not reflect the fact that the cost of living in the Bay Area is one of the highest in the country. This massive cost of employee contributions to our medical benefits only exacerbates this problem. When neighboring districts cover more or even all of the cost of benefits, leaving Berkeley begins to look more attractive. I'm thinking about having children, I was shocked to learn that teachers have to use their sick days before using child-rearing leave to have any kind of financial stability. And then they only get one-fourth of their regular pay during their leave, which barely covers the cost of family healthcare. Family planning should not involve calculating sick days with how long you can survive with a quarter pay or no pay, or scheduling your pregnancy based on an academic calendar. Shouldn't the professionals in an industry that is dedicated to children be given the dignity and respect to grow their families on their own terms?
If you could send us the rest of your comments by email, that'd be great. Next we have Jacqueline Kandura, followed by Sharon Arthur.
I'm here to tell you that I love my job. I love being a mother, and I deserve to be treated with dignity. The district's pay and benefits tell me you do not honor or respect me as a mother.
Oh, you're, can you turn on your, is it on? Okay, there you go, I can hear myself too, okay. I'm here to tell you that I love my job, I love being a mother, and I deserve to be treated with dignity. The district's pay and benefits tell me you do not honor or respect me as a mother, woman, teacher, or human being. I gave birth to my first son in February of twenty twenty-two, and my maternity leave for the school year included fifty-nine of my sick days, and then I was paid twenty-five of my pay for the rest of the school year. I used my sick days because I financially had no other option. I deserved my child-rearing leave to be more than twenty-five percent of my salary. I deserve to have my sick days now for this school year, and rather than be negative and in debt of sick days from the sick leave. I deserve to have my sick days instead of being in debt with the sick leave bank. Any more days I take off will result in a real loss of pay at a time when my expenses as a new mother have increased sharply. I cannot continue to grow my family or take care of myself or my family without the monetary support of B U S D. As a first-time mother, your policies around child-rearing leave are shocking and disrespectful. Thank you, Ms. Kandura. Next we have Sharon Arthur, followed by Johanna Paraiso.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Arthur, and I've been teaching at Willard Middle School since two thousand. I love my job, and I love that I've been able to live and work in Berkeley. Living in a city where I teach connects me more to the people who live here. I can attend events outside of school and be part of the community. One of the reasons I can still afford to live in Berkeley is that when I moved to my current apartment twelve years ago, near Berkeley High, the landlord gave me fifty dollars off a month because I was a teacher. So since then, my rent has only increased about three hundred dollars. Unfortunately, living in Berkeley or nearby cities is not an option for many teachers and support staff. I think about the number of educators, especially those who are on the lower end of the salary scale. I know they are struggling to meet and make ends meet. Some rent rooms, others crash on friends' couches, while others live miles away, all due to being unable to afford rent. I'm afraid that we will lose our best inviteers to other districts where paying rent won't break the bank. Please think about hiring retention when working with B F T and negotiations. We need to pay our teachers and staff more to continue having a vibrant and dynamic district, thank you.
Thank you, and next we have Johanna Paraiso, followed by Joemi and Lindsay Nofel.
Good evening, School Board, my name is Jo Paraiso. And of my twenty-one years as a public school teacher, I have spent the last five years teaching at Willard Middle School here in Berkeley. My students call me Ms. P. Along with that, I'm also the proud parent of five children, all of whom have graduated from or are still attending Berkeley Public Schools. I stand here to speak on behalf of my colleagues, many of whom are on the district's health benefits. Before coming to Berkeley, I taught next door in Oakland, where one hundred percent of my benefits were covered. When I came to Berkeley, I was shocked to learn that just over fifty percent of the cost was covered. I lived with that twelve hundred dollar a month cost for three years, but am now one of the rare teachers who married a unicorn and can now use their spouse's benefits. That's not the case for so many of the dedicated and passionate teachers we entrust our children to daily. Compensation increases that merely disguise how much more we end up paying into our own benefits is a sad comment on the district's commitment to one of its most valuable assets, its teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, and next, next we have Joemi, followed by Lindsay Nofel.
Good evening, my name is Joemi Ito Gates, she her pronouns. I'm the Ethnic Studies Teacher on Special Assignment, twenty-year veteran teacher and a mother in the district. This year, I have had the joy and the honor of working with the Berkeley High Native Student Union and Indigenous Women-led organization, Seguroite Land Trust, to develop a visual land acknowledgement mural proposal for our district. Two of the student leaders, Diego and Miguel, wanted to be here to read their own comments regarding Consent Calendar Item twelve point six. They couldn't make it, so I am honored to read their statement on their behalf. As native students, we want our voices to be heard and our club's message to be shared past our high school years. The proposed mural project would highlight the key components of the urban native youth experience in Berkeley, the continuation of traditional practices, while keeping the focus on the sacred shaman site and city life. The project is a commitment to and continuation of the land-back movement demonstrating the flourishing native community in Berkeley and B U S D.
Thank you, Ms. Ito Gates, can you please email us the rest of those comments?
I will, thank you so much.
Thank you. Then can we get Lindsay Nofel, followed by Hazmic Manassian.
My name is Lindsay Nofel, I'm a member of Reading for Berkeley. Reading is a civil right because it's a foundational skill necessary for full participation in society. To open equitable pathways, we have to teach kids how to read early and efficiently. The outlined steps in item fifteen point one gives us hope that we can address the faults in our current system. Sometimes, though, we fall into old habits of not leaning hard enough on expert-created material. Currently, staff are spending time creating a patchwork of resources for teachers to use next year while we wait for a new curriculum. This still requires an enormous amount of prep time to use. Other solutions exist, like removing Fast Track and replacing it with a more comprehensive, low-cost, and easy-to-use foundational skill supplement called U-Fly, and it can be used K through twelve. Teachers with curriculum have more time to give specific feedback, collaborate, and reflect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nofel, and we have Hazmic Manassian, followed by Mati Tabun.
My name is Hazmic Manassian, I teach Ethnic Studies at Berkeley High School. I'm the teacher leader for the Universal Ninth Grade Program. I'm here to share a successful experience teaching our lessons on Israel and Palestine. We take our jobs very seriously as teachers, and student feedback is often woven into improving our curriculum. We plan, we teach, we revise, we get feedback, we revise some more, we teach again. And because of the nature of this particular topic and the concerns from the community, we asked for specific feedback from students, and they offered an overwhelmingly positive response. The percentage of students who agreed or strongly agreed when asked different questions about whether the lessons were meaningful, impactful, valuable, safe, and allowed them to consider multiple perspectives, were all well over ninety percent. But the individual reflections, especially for my Arab and Jewish students, were the most notable. They said, I appreciated that it seemed like they really took into consideration how multifaceted the conflict is, and as such, didn't take any firm stance on what's right, wrong, or beyond the humanitarian issues, thank you.
Can you email us the rest of your comments, thank you. Next we have Mati Tabun. Followed by Yasmin Navarro and Robin Lindheimer.
Superintendent, I'm still waiting for a response to my email asking about the composition and the procedures of getting on the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee. You know the front page of the newspaper test? And if you don't want it, if you wouldn't want it to be on the front page of the newspaper, you wouldn't do it. And I'm still trying to wrap my head, why are there secret committees at B U S D? Now, in August of twenty twenty-three, the governor sent you and the leadership an email, a letter, specifically asking to you to be very critical because there are vendors offering materials that may not meet their requirements of A B one oh one. I mean, it could have said, dear Superintendent Ford Mortel, it says, dear leader. And my question is.
Would you please email us the rest of your comments? Thank you very much for your comments, the next speaker we have are Yasmin Navarro, followed by Robin Lindheimer. I think we have Ms. Navarro come first in the order of my cards. I think she's right there next to you, and then, and then I think it's you, Robin.
Speedrun. Hello, distinguished members of the board, my name is Yasmin Navarro, I'm a college counselor at B H S. Two years ago, I was hired to be the inaugural Puente Counselor, and I'm here to give a brief update. Currently, we have two cohorts of puenteistas with a total enrollment of forty-five students. Recruitment was initially very challenging. Thanks to recent B H S policy change and direct presentations by our Puente Club Executive Board, we have sixty upcoming A C tenth graders, students interested in joining Cohort Three, doubling our numbers in two years. By year five, we will have one hundred and twenty students in Puente English classes with another By year five, we will have one hundred and twenty students in Puente English classes with another one hundred and fifty members of the Puente Club. The club is for students who are still ninth graders or not in the Puente classes but are interested in accessing programming. The club is solely run by Puente program students in direct leadership roles, creating opportunities for Puente estas to develop their agency, initiative, and follow-through. I'm in the middle of reviewing data for the past two years and can return at a future date to share. This has not been an easy lift. It has been a worthwhile lift. I look forward to seeing our long-fellow eighth-grade Puente estas step onto our campus, to meeting our new Puente counselor, and, oh yeah, to celebrating our first graduating class of Puente at Berkeley High. It's through many circumstances that Puente is now VHS, and we can probably say Puente Vicente.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Now, we have Robin Lindheimer, and the last comment before we move to online comments will be Sahar G.
My name is Robin Lindheimer, and I'm actually the father of Taz, who spoke earlier. So I'm very proud. I say, so I'm a Jewish parent of a Jewish-identified child who's gone to Berkeley Unified School District for all of his schooling. I love the teachers. I love the staff. I've had nothing but wonderful experiences with them and with the curriculum. I know that it's very difficult to teach about what's going on in the situation in Palestine. Anti-Semitism is horrible, should never be tolerated, and I don't think it's occurring, or at least not in my experience and not in my son's experience and not in the experience of all of our Jewish friends and non-Jewish friends. He's had nothing but wonderful things to say about how the topic's been covered in the Liberated Ethnic Studies course, mini-course or whatever that he took. He went to the walkouts and had wonderful experiences, even conversing and seeing people converse with counter protesters. And the accusation of anti-Semitism should never be used to silence people.
Thank you, Robin. And our last public comment will be by Sahar G.
President of Columbia is getting eviscerated. They're asking really leading questions, talking over her. Students are just gasping and are shocked. Those are quotes from Columbia students watching their president being questioned today in a televised, right-wing congressional witch hunt. This is the kind of danger a handful of pro-Israel parents have unleashed on our district and our beloved superintendent. Yes, you are beloved to us. The handful of parents who brought this ire on our tiny community of nine thousand students aren't representative of Berkeley's progressive politics. We partner with politicians like Virginia Fox, who voted against same-sex marriage, isn't for abortion, even in the cases of health emergencies or assault. These right-wing alliances, be it MAGA elected officials or pro-Trump Brandeis center, show that pro-Israel parents don't believe in our collective children's safety, and they'll throw all of us under the bus for their allegiance to Israel and its right-wing government. While these parents paint our children's protests for Palestinian freedom as rampant anti-Semitism, they continue to participate in the systemic racism and deliberate dehumanization of Palestinians. The demon is our children's calls.
Thank you, Sahar. If you could email us the rest of your public comments, that would be appreciated. Next, we will move on to online comments. We'll have ten minutes of online comments. I see exactly ten speakers. Were their hands up? You see, I think, I'm not sure if S. Yahya is a student, Ms. Chiris. That looked like a student, too. So we'll promote that speaker first, the student speaker, and then we'll follow up with Nadia, followed by Lori. So let's start with S. Yahya, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name.
Hello, my name is Yahya.
If you could unmute yourself, that would be great, so we could hear you.
I am a student at King. I am here to share my own story about the King ceasefire walk-in. I participated and helped organize the November ceasefire walkout at King. The protest was very peaceful, and and of the walkout was to show support for Palestine and a ceasefire in Gaza. I gave a speech...
You are unmuted, so I think you should be able to speak. Have Mr. Isar coming to troubleshoot.
Can you hear me now? I gave a speech about a ceasefire in Gaza because thousands of innocent men, women, and children are being killed.
Sure, let's move on to Nadia, and then we'll come back to the student speaker.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, one second, speaker. It sounds like we have a problem on our side. Our tech folks are coming to address it. Please bear with us as we get through some of our technological challenges.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
All right, we're going to try again. Nadia, if you could unmute yourself and speak, let me give it a try.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hey, y'all. My name is Nadia. I'm a Palestinian BUSD alum, kindergarten through high school. I'm a former student in the ROP photo program where Eric Norberg taught before he was forcibly put on leave. Eric is a beloved community member who has taught generations of Berkeley students, and we really want him back to continue to teach this generation of Berkeley kids. On that note, Berkeley should be proud to reflect the anti-racist and anti-apartheid principles of its historic choices. There are many difficult decisions to be made in the present, but choosing to support teachers that open their classrooms to speak about the unfolding genocide against the Palestinian people should not be one of them. Uplifting a curriculum that is truly globally conscious and deduced so while meeting explicit pedagogical goals should not be one of those difficult decisions. I thank you for making history and unanimously passing the Arab and Swana American Heritage Month resolution, and I ask that you renew the contract with Liberated Ethnic Studies into 2024 and 2025 and confront this most difficult moment with courage and visionary leadership. I really encourage you to look around you and to see how much this community has your back. Since when did Brandeis?
Thank you. Next, we'll move on. Shall we try the student speaker again, Ms. Chiris? Try to unmute the student speaker this time. Yes, Yaya Hamron. We'll try to unmute you this time and see if it works.
Hello, my name is Yaya. I am a student at King. I am here to share my own story about the King ceasefire walkout. I participated and helped organize the November ceasefire walkout at King. The protest was very peaceful. The purpose of the walkout was to show support for Palestine and a ceasefire in Gaza. I gave a speech about a ceasefire in Gaza because thousands of innocent men and women are being killed. It feels really scary and disturbing that people have to lie and accuse us hate when we went a peaceful ceasefire in Gaza. These are the exact reasons that had made me feel unsafe in doing another walkout.
Thank you, Yaya, for your comments. Next, we'll move on to Lori, followed by Elizabeth Hamron.
Hi, my name is Lori. I'm a VHS parent, and I'd like to cede my time to Nadia.
Nadia already spoke, but thank you, Lori. I don't know if you want to finish your comments or... All right, Nadia already spoke. We'll move on to Elizabeth Hamron, followed by KG.
Hi, good evening. I'm a Muslim Yemeni-American parent of Dawood and Ismail Hamran, and aunt of Yassin and Yahya Hamran, and also a member of the BUSD Swana Parent Group. I want to set the record straight about the King walkout that happened back in November. Both of my nephews are students at King and also survivors of a war that devastated the country where we are from, and some of their friends are as well. They planned the walkout with support of myself and other parents. A-Rock and BUSD staff were not involved. My nephews and their friends made the flyers, and my older nephew gave a speech calling for a ceasefire in Gaza and freedom for Palestine. There were more than ten adults there who witnessed the peaceful protest, where students called for a ceasefire, peace, and freedom. The lies being spread about the protest are shameful and very dangerous. As a woman who is visibly Muslim, I personally felt afraid of some of the parents who were there reporting our kids, and so did our kids. They have not felt safe enough to plan another.
Thank you. So we have KG and then Katie Reese.
I am a Jewish BUSD parent. I am not a Zionist. My family, including my eighty-two-year-old mom, are not Zionists. So again, Zionism and Judaism are not the same thing. I am one hundred percent pro-liberated ethnic studies. The USD Zionists are being driven by fear, but their fear and safety is not exceptional. I fear for anti-Asian hate. I fear for black lives and police brutality. I fear for our trans student safety, and I fear deeply for Palestinian and Arab and Muslim safety. I believe it is our duty, our most solemn duty, as people who are seeking collective liberation to speak out in complete and enthusiastic support of other marginalized communities. We do not get there except together. Anyone claiming their struggle is more important misses the whole point. Listen to BIPOC voices. Listen to teachers. Please fund and renew Liberated Ethnic Studies. Thank you.
Next, we have Katie Reese, followed by Bakils.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everyone. I just want to share an anecdote related to the ELA curriculum adoption, which will be discussed tonight. When I picked my four-year-old up from preschool today, she spent twenty minutes telling me about penguins. Her class is doing a deep dive into Antarctica, and she is fired up about penguins, and the fact she knows and the language she's developing are astounding. My twins, who are in first grade, on the other hand, they don't come home like that most days. And my sense is that it's because they spend a lot of their day doing things that attempt to teach important skills, but for the most part, aren't very engaging for them. And I do not fault their wonderful and highly experienced teachers for this. I largely fault the curriculum, which doesn't give our teachers or our kids much to work with. The new ELA curriculum needs to expose kids to diverse topics to grow their vocabulary and their capacity for understanding complex texts and topics. Seven years old is too young to be this uninspired by school. Let's get this new curriculum right. Please ask tough questions tonight.
Thank you. And next, we have Bakils, followed by former council member Cheryl Davila. And our last public commenter of the evening will be Lukai A. Lucchi. Bakils, and then former council member Cheryl Davila. B-A-K-E-E-L-S. Do you see them, Ms. Chiris?
Hi, my name is Bakil.
We hear you, Bakil.
We hear you, Bakil.
I am from Kim Rusko, and I'm the one who are planning to do a Palestine protest. And we shared with the kids, and all of the kids joined it, and they told me to be it and to do all of it. And we do with all of it, me and my friends and my brother. So we planned to do it, and we got help with our family. And we copy some papers, and we showed every kid, and we did it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have former council member Cheryl Davila, followed by Lukai, and that'll be our last online public commenter.
Hi, so I'm here, raise my hand, online. Yeah. So I just want you to imagine that you've had this Ethnic Studies curriculum and that you've taught Palestine for five years, and that you've honored the request of the Two-Spirit students at Berkeley High. And just imagine how beautiful the school is, how everyone's getting along, and they're understanding the whole history of what's going on. Can you imagine this beautiful school with Palestinian youth, Black and Brown, Indigenous children, all having fun, teaching each other their histories, and learning all the histories in their schools? Can you imagine what a beautiful place that would be? Just think about it.
Thank you, former council member. Now, we have Lucchi A. online, and that will be our last online commenter for this part of the meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Great, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say, Superintendent Anikia, you are a treasure and a champion for our children, teachers, and staff. We are so lucky to have you. We will support you. Thank you. I also would like to remind our wonderful board that something you probably already know, that young people, especially students and especially Bay Area students, have always led the way to a more equitable future. Please continue to listen to them. And third, for the Israeli man who wants to be a part of the Ethnic Studies curriculum, I'd like to read you a quick poem from Palestinian poet Karim Wafa al-Husseini, who said, "My grandmother's cooking pot carries more history than the colonizer's kitchen." Thank you.
All right, that concludes, that now concludes this public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak. If you did not get to speak, please remember there is an extended public comment period at the end of the meeting. Additionally, you can always email the Board of Education at boardofed@berkeley.net, or you can contact us individually. Our information is posted. Or you can contact us individually. Our information is posted online on the board website. Now we will move on to committee comments. Ms. Chires, do we have any union comments this evening? I believe President Meyer sent a virtual comment. I don't know if there are any in-person union comments. Do you have the email, Ms. Chires? Do you want me to forward it? You have it, okay. No problem. And there's a tech issue with the audio. Please bear with us while we, uh, load the union comments.
Good evening, Superintendent Ford Morthell and Berkeley School Board Directors. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I want to start off by thanking you for the Berkeley Adult School Resolution. This community is often overlooked, yet provides a huge educational service to our community, young and old. I also want to thank you for lifting up this Swana community and considering a resolution that speaks to the specific needs of this community in Berkeley Unified, and look forward to the ongoing discussions, uh, supporting the different affinity groups in our district. Unfortunately, tonight I need to address some serious concerns that I have observed in our community since the Hamas attacks on October seventh and the terrible conflict that has ensued. I have been teaching in Berkeley since two thousand and six and have never seen such negativity and distrust hurled at individual educators. I feel compelled to bring this up publicly because so much of this harassment happens in private settings or over email. It is irresponsible and dangerous to name our educators on social media and over listservs. A single mention generates a bombardment of emails from people that are unfamiliar with the situation and in today's political context can be scary and cause a massive disruption to our educational environment. I personally had to deal with harassment and threats a few years.
Ms. Chires, do you need some minutes to, to look for it? We can call committee comments if that's helpful. Ms. Chires, I just shared the, today's comments with you. Okay, great.
Hello, Superintendent Ford Morthell and the Berkeley School Board. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'm here today to discuss our ongoing contract negotiations with the district. With all the national attention, these bread and butter issues of how we make sure our educators and students are being served hopefully feels like a relief. As you have heard from our members and will continue to hear, our ability to stay in our jobs, raise families, put in the work needed after our duty time, and take care of our students' needs is reflected in our governing board's priorities. I am concerned with the silence of our board on issues pertaining to the recruitment and retention of our educators. We have heard from this board that having our educators be longstanding members of this community is important in theory, but we need to know that our district is ready to back up that rhetoric. I've spoken about this in the past, but I would like to highlight some key points. Every educator on district benefits took a mid-year pay cut this year. Those of us with families are paying two hundred dollars more a month this year compared to last year for health benefits. Although we have received salary increases, we are not keeping up with neighboring districts. This doesn't even factor the out-of-pocket healthcare expenses that are not represented in our comparison data. We are still in the bottom third in total compensation for comparative districts. We are second to last for our veteran teachers for total compensation. Only Oakland is behind us, and even with all the financial trouble they are in, their board has expressed the desire to make sure their educators are receiving fair compensation. We've had less drop in average daily attendance compared to neighboring districts, and yet every other district is giving their educators salary increases. This means we will fall even further behind and will be unable to attract credentialed educators. We already have a record number of teachers without proper credentials, and this will only get worse. I would like to name the districts in our county and directly surrounding areas that offer better compensation for their employees than Berkeley and have had higher loss of students between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-three. Livermore, Alameda, Fremont, San Francisco, Emory, New Haven, Hayward, West Contra Costa, Newark, San Lorenzo, and Piedmont. They have all managed by looking at expenses to make sure their wages remain competitive. Salary increases must be a core consideration, no matter the budget situation. The data doesn't reflect our patriarchal childcare policies, which pretty much assumes that there is a spouse that makes a good income in order to even go off work to take care of a new baby. Twenty-five percent pay barely covers the family medical plan deductions, let alone rent bills and all the costs associated with having a baby. At one of the hardest times in someone's life, they are hit with the added stress of a major loss of income. The data also does not reflect that our neighboring districts pay their teachers for work they do outside of their workday, like attending IEP 504 and SST meetings. We are expected to show up to and lead meetings that sometimes last past five P M. for basically free. My members, the nine hundred credentialed educators in our district, fully expect the district to engage with us in this conversation over the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, President Meyer. Uh, seeing that there are no other union comments, now we will move on to committee comments. Ms. Chires, are there any committees here for comments tonight? Uh, Ms. Knofelt, are you here for the pack? Alright.
I thought we could get five minutes. Okay. My name is Lindsay Knofelt, speaking as co-chair of the Parent Advisory Committee on the LCAP. This comment was approved by the committee April eleventh before tonight's meeting materials were available for review. The superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee has been charged with making ongoing reductions to the general fund in the range of six point five to nine million dollars, starting in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is the largest reduction in our budget in recent memory. These reductions will have a wide impact across the district and will require painful decisions. But it's also an opportunity for creative thinking and a willingness to make big moves to align all our resources and funding pools. Our local control funding formula supplemental funds, that's a mouthful, support many programs like Bridge, Avid, OFI, LEAP, Restorative Justice Counselors, English Language Development Support, Response to Intervention, and many more. These programs and services propose to assist specific student populations as defined by the state of California. They are extra dollars to help students with the greatest needs. The promise of public education is aligned with the BUSD's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. We want to be that leg up for all the students and especially those who have been marginalized. However, for many years, we have not been able to determine evidence that all of our programs and support helps us achieve that mission. Furthermore, we cannot certify that LCFF supplemental funds are used exclusively for the focal students defined by the state. We recommend a three-pronged approach to assessing funding eligibility for all BUSD monies, not just the supplemental fund. Number one, accountability. Notably, the programs that have evidence of success have been required to collect and report data because some of their funding comes from the city. All other programs and services that are funded just by BUSD have not shown us the data because they have not been required to collect it. As a baseline, funding for any program using BUSD money should require data collection and dissemination in program reports that align with data that we already have at our LCAP, just as the city of Berkeley requires. These reports should be widely shared with all committees. Number two, expand on the good. Our educators achieve amazing things every day. We have responded to student needs with investment, so we have a sea of support available. Yet, some programs have waiting lists and others are under-enrolled. And some students enroll in multiple programs in order to get the positive effect sought. These results tell us we need to shift focus to programs with proven results. Number three, build internal capacity. The forecast for education, eh, education funding is bleak. And in these years of trimming budgets, we must remain clear-eyed and candid about human capital and system capacity. By choosing just a select number of programs with proven track records and with an eye to early intervention, we can move past reliance on outside contractors and continue the important work of supporting our students. We can achieve these goals through our existing workforce. After reviewing the programs and actions funded by our LCAP, we are left only with big questions, as usual. Number one, where are the fault lines in our structures and systems that result in the need to invest millions into tutoring, especially at the high school level? Is the tutoring effective? What needs to change so the extra service boosts yearly growth instead of maintaining the flat line that we've seen for decades? And how are affinity spaces created throughout the school day to combat racial isolation? The PAC recommends a full evaluations of programs and actions, no matter the funding source, completed in order to determine the best combination of programs for reach, efficacy, and efficiency. In the meantime, please be aware that the PAC plans to recommend funding shifts that remove some programs from supplemental funding sources and add others in. Thank you for your support to make sure our finite resources have the biggest impact on the students supported by the LCFF supplemental funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knofelt, for your committee comments. Now, uh, colleagues, we'll move on to board member comments. Who would like to start your board member comments tonight? Are there additional committee comments? Okay, G-Shack, please come up.
Hello, School Board. My name is October Hertenstein, and I'm here once again on behalf of G-Shack and the Gender Expansive Youth Activists. I'd like to acknowledge that I will be discussing the suicide of teenagers and young adults today, but I believe it is important enough to bring up. On March fourteenth of this year, the cause of death for an ex-benedict, a sixteen-year-old non-binary teen assaulted in the girls' bathroom, was found to be suicide by drug overdose. While devastated, the general response from transgender teenagers at Berkeley High School was that we are not surprised. A two-year study published in twenty fifteen found that twenty-four percent, almost one-fourth of teenage suicides in twelve-to-fourteen-year-olds were committed by members of the LGBT community. And it goes further. Data from twenty twenty indicates that eighty-two percent of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves, and forty percent have attempted suicide, with suicidality highest among transgender youth. Some may consider an ex-benedict's death the old news, but it passed with only a whisper of acknowledgement at Berkeley High School. And BUSD must start doing better for our teens. Berkeley High School has over three thousand students, yet just today I got an email that our queer literature class may not have enough students to run next year. How can we claim to care for our trans students when events that affected many of us tremendously, myself included, have passed by unheard? How can we claim to educate our trans students when our programs are not able to run? You have impact, and you've heard my voice before. It's time to use yours. Thank you.
Thank you, G-Shack, for your comments tonight. There, there are no additional committee comments. I don't see any other committees in the audience, Ms. Chires, any other committees? Now, I will move on to board member comments. Colleagues, who would like to start? Uh, Director Shinoski.
Good evening. Um, I don't have much to say. I want to congratulate Mr. Fredman on, um, becoming the new principal of Thousand Oaks. And I wanted to make an announcement to our trans students who have been coming and advocating, um, week after week after week. Um, October, Emma, and Sydney, uh, we hear you, and we're really excited that to announce that through collaboration and work and efforts, um, led by the superintendent, other board members, our Title IX Coordinator and Facilities Director, um, there will be some changes, um, before the next board meeting. So thank you for your advocacy.
Uh, any other, uh, board colleagues who would like to follow? Director Shinoski? Uh, Director Rabbit?
Alright, first I'd like to start with a fun fact about our very own Vice President Brown. One of her favorite places on earth that most likely matches yours, or especially your children's favorite place on earth, is can anybody guess? Nope. Disneyland, Disneyland. And so I want to thank, uh, Director Chang for bringing, um, delicious cupcakes for us to celebrate her birthday during closed session, which was, which was yesterday. And I'd like to publicly wish her a happy birthday with this Minnie Mouse balloon, which is also mostly pink and green. It wasn't so late, I was singing, but we can sing it later. Um, and to everyone else, I'd like to express my deep gratitude for all of those who planned, implemented, and participated in last week's fifth and eighth grade transition fair sponsored by the African-American Success Framework. It was amazingly heartwarming to see so many of our staff, our students, and city providers share offerings and advice to our families with passion, excitement, and joy. One father wrote this letter in response to the transition fair. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank BUSD's district leadership, as well as the teachers and staff for hosting the transition fair this past weekend. My daughter will be entering Berkeley High School in the fall of twenty twenty-four, and I have a combination of excitement, fear, and anxiety. Needless to say, the information tables coupled with the presentation did a great deal to ally, to LA, some of those concerns. Thank you again for your time, selfless service, and compassion to our children's education and future. Thank you all. For my committee update to my board colleagues, I, I am the representative for the Parent Advisory Committee, and they continue to work through the LCAP Plan Goals and Related Actions. As they do this, they continue to be alarmed by the district's, um, outcomes for Black and Brown students, and continue to highlight the need for the district to and continue to highlight the need for the district to better understand how services are being implemented, what accountability measures we have in place to make sure that we're going to improve these outcomes for our students. As stated in their comments tonight, we should expect the PAC recommendations to include funding shifts for certain actions, and that our goals are to ensure that the finite resources provided through the supplemental funds are those that will have the biggest impacts on the students these funds are meant to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues who would like to continue? Director Chang and Vice President Brown?
I'm actually gonna pass tonight, so you can go to Director Chang.
Thank you. We were all surprised. Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see everyone. You've now learned that our superintendent has been called to speak before Congress. This is understandably alarming to hear for our community and for our children. I want to say that I know that Inikiya is superintendent, is going to make us proud and show the country what Berkeley values are all about. And I want everyone to know that the board is unified in support of our superintendent. In addition, in this particular moment, I think it is important to highlight and take some time to reflect appreciation for the pedagogical skills of our Berkeley, Berkeley teachers in covering controversial issues. As a longtime educator in ethnic studies, civil rights and civil liberties, I know that war, race, and difference are very challenging issues to teach. I have confidence in our teachers that they do so with love and care for the children that they educate, even as they navigate complex and different viewpoints. Associated with that, I want to remind ourselves that doxing is not advocacy. Such actions, when directed at teachers, staff, or administrators, are disruptive to the programs and services of the district. Let's channel our concerns and disagreement through constructive means, which include speech expression, such as here in this public forum, and through our complaint processes at the district and beyond. Thanks to the student speakers advocating for bathroom safety and trans and LGBT students advocating as well for bathroom safety, student speakers supporting Puente, congratulations to the first graduating class, Jewish-American students supporting the teaching of controversial issues, teachers on their cost of living challenges and the importance of benefits for recruitment and retention, parent and committee reminders on the importance of literacy and the ELA curriculum, G-Shack student advocacy on mental health support and safety for transgender students. If I've missed anything, I apologize. Just kind of update for my board colleagues. We're working away, and for members of the public, we're working away on our policies on the policy committee. Thank you, Yasmina, for her expert skill in navigating this, and we're working to ensure that they are updated to current standards. Thank you, members of the public, for your emails asking about and supporting policy updates. I continue to meet with many of you throughout the week. If you would like office hours again, please send an email to my board email, and we can set it up. Thanks again. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And I also, I'm gonna keep my comments really brief. Want to appreciate everyone who came tonight, and particularly our students that came to give public comments about the need for transgender restrooms. I want to thank our educators that came to talk to us about fair compensation. The speakers that came to talk about what's happening in the classroom around ethnic studies, and also just really appreciate our puentistas who came. I don't know how many of you know, but I was early in my tenure on the board when I really pushed for Puente programs, programs around in other school districts, and I'm thrilled to actually get to see the students that are benefiting from this program. And so I just want to give them a shout out, and their teachers a shout out for helping us prepare our students to go to college through this wonderful program. And with that, I also want to thank the community that came out in support of our superintendent. Again, as Director Chang said, stand very much in support of our superintendent, knowing that she's preparing for a really important hearing, but have full confidence that she will represent our district well. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues so we can proceed with our meeting.
I have a comment to make.
Oh, Student Director, I'm so sorry, I forgot to call on you.
It's okay, it's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Wait, am I like on the screen?
You are, yeah.
Hi, everyone. I apologize for not making it in person today, but I'm really glad that I could join you all online. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Winter Clark for being elected as next year's Berkeley High, Berkeley High School's next student director. She's a fellow member of Youth in Government with me, and knowing her personally, Winter is an extremely hard worker, and I strongly believe in her ability to represent our diverse student community. I know she's involved with multiple initiatives within our community already politically, and so she really has the strong abilities to be able to fulfill the role next year. I'm really excited to work with her to, for the rest of the school year, to assure a smooth transition between our roles and continuing advocacy work that I've been doing on campus. Second, next Wednesday, the 24th, is Denim Day, a nationwide day that is celebrated to stand in solidarity with survivors of sexual harassment and assault. And so, working with the Women's Student Union, we've been planning an advocacy day on campus. So for all students or anybody wanting to support, wear your denim to, you know, show your solidarity, and there will be like tables and information on campus. I assume, we're still planning it, but it's probably gonna be at lunch. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Student Director Liao. And again, I'm so sorry, I forgot to call on you. And now, we'll proceed to the approval of our consent calendar. Colleagues, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Move to do so?
Moved by Director Chang. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Babett. Ms. Chares, can you please call the rule?
Director Liao?
Yes.
Director Shinoski?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Positiv?
Yes. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to our first action item. 13.1, which is the BHS Capacity and Expansion Project. So I don't know, Superintendent, Director, is Director Kalis going to introduce the subject? Great.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members. Just wait for a moment for the presentation to come up. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Berkeley High School Capacity and Expansion Project. Typically schematic design approval is done only on consent. This evening's project is being discussed as a brief presentation, looking for action primarily because of what it does. Next slide, or, sorry. Doesn't work, Ms. Chides. So we'll start off, we always talk about the district's mission, as well as the mission statement of facilities. And really, in the interest of brevity, what I'll say is that they all absolutely touch on the four Es that our district is absolutely committed to. Next slide. So tonight, we want to talk about how this project came to be. An overview of a new CTE building project, which also deals with gen ed classrooms and many other things on the campus, a relocation of the softball field, as well as hopefully gain approval of the schematic design from the board. Next slide. So originally, the board had approved a project to modernize G107 and 109, which was the old Berkeley Community Media Space, about 5,000 square feet. And it was supposed to be turned into CTE space for advanced machining and robotics. As we started to dive into this project, what we quickly noticed was because of where it is in the G building, the costs were going to be exponentially higher than it was originally anticipated, primarily to deal with noise and ventilation in this building. Next slide. This shows the space on the bottom of that, and it's roughly 5,000 square feet, which equates to five general ed classrooms, which, as we all know, are desperately needed on Berkeley High School campus. Next slide, please. So the first part of this project would actually be to take this space and convert it back to five general ed classrooms, which I've spoken with Principal DeGosa and everybody else, and they're absolutely thrilled to get, but it does not solve the need at Berkeley High. Next slide. So what we proposed is actually putting a new building. What we're looking at is right now, the softball field, which is located on the other end of the campus, is really underutilized space. It's used for about four months out of the year, and it only serves our softball. By putting up a new building, which is roughly 18,000 square feet, this accommodates the needs of a growing CTE program. It affords CTE about 5,000 square feet of space for advanced machining and robotics. It also adds an additional five general ed classrooms to the campus, so a total of 10 new gen ed classrooms would be on campus. It solves the problem of not having tennis courts for Berkeley High, for our student athletes, as well as the community. This creates an opportunity for us to add a significant number of gender-neutral restrooms on the campus, as well as much-needed office space, conference room space. And it also solves one of our safety issues right now, which is that all of our administrators for Berkeley High are housed in one corner of the campus. This slows the response time, and this, by doing this, it actually allows us to house one to two administrators on the opposite end of the campus. Additionally, when we laid this out, when we laid out with the tennis courts and the building, we still had enough area left over that we can accommodate another 23 parking spaces for our high school educators on this campus. Next slide. So the new building proposal is a two-story square foot building. The statistics are right there as far as what it gives you as far as office spaces, gender-neutral restrooms, et cetera. And then, we plan to remove the existing portables that are on the backside of the stadium right now. And then, we're looking at different options over at Mullering Field to make some changes to Mullering Field that right now only takes baseball, but it will accommodate both baseball and softball, and it creates a little bit of equity and parity in the sense of that both our boys and our girl student athletes will all play at the same location. Next slide. So these next two slides are really here just so that anybody who wants to look at them can. It explains each level and what we plan to house there. But additionally, with robotics, what we know is that there's an absolute need for a robotics field, and that's for when they're building, when they're testing, and when they're training to ultimately compete. There's a fair amount of outdoor space that we were able to utilize and simply cover with skylights. So we have plenty of daylighting, and it affords a number of viewing positions from the second level, but it also creates a large robotics field to be used, and this can be used for collaboration space for other things as well. Next slide. Uh, go ahead. So second floor, again, additional general ed classrooms, additional offices, and then covered outdoor collaboration area, which is great for breakout space, but also a viewing platform. Next slide. So building form, when we were working on the designs, we really, we look at the Berkeley High campus, which we have everything from the C building dating back to the 30s and the architecture of the 20s, the theater, and then some modern buildings. And what we've done is we've looked at it in a way to really incorporate both the old and new designs together so that it's not an eyesore on the campus, and it's really there to complement that. Next slide. So softball field relocation, what we're looking at and we're studying is, as part of this, moving this from schematic design to design development, is really, what is the best way to do this? We know Mullering Field has a large baseball field right now. It also has basketball courts, but it also has some open green space that's absolutely utilized. There is some underutilized area at Mullering Field, as well as some problematic issues in the sense of when Mullering Field was put up, there was absolutely no bathrooms put at Mullering Field. So currently, the student athletes have to gain access to BTA. And there's also very limited seating and things like that for our competitions. So option one is to actually create a multipurpose field that can be used for both baseball and softball. Now, this would allow us to keep the existing green space, but it does come with its own set of challenges. From talking with our athletic directors and whatnot, we understand that the, they don't, at a cursory look, it doesn't appear that it would work, but it could work with lights being installed. So we are engaging with an environmental impact or with a SEQA consultant to see if an EIR is needed. We've also, we're also doing a couple of different studies, including lighting studies, because the new lights, they don't have the bleed over that old stadium lights do. So they're very directional. It's not like it's gonna light up somebody's backyard the way it would have 10 years ago. Next slide. Option two would actually be to relocate the basketball court to the far end, the end on the right of your screen, but it would actually be creating two separate fields. By doing this, we can avoid using lights. However, this would be, require the removal of the green space that right now was left over at Mullering Field. So the next steps on this is further design in partnership with a lease-leaseback contractor to help us through pre-construction and also value engineering. We want to continue, we've already done some community engagement on this, and we're committed to doing additional community engagement. We're partnering with Contigo, who is a partner that we've been using with all of the facilities meetings. They're great with community outreach, facilitation, surveys, and they also help to ensure to really hear the voices of those that don't get heard. Through that partnership, we're developing a survey to go out really to all of South Berkeley to really understand which preference would be had of the two options when it comes to Mullering Field. That green space is park space right now that is open for the residents of South Berkeley, which we recognize has the least access to public parks. Again, we'll go through the SEQA study, and then beyond that, we'll continue furtherment of design, going through the state architect, and then anticipate construction to begin possibly summer of '25. So design is really now through six of, through June of '24, assuming that we gain board approval tonight. Then it goes to the state architect, and for bidding, that will take roughly six months. Construction here shows to start in January, but understanding what the schools, the school schedules are, as well as the athletic schedule, we anticipate it would start a little bit later than that. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Colleagues, we'll start with Vice President Brown, followed by Director Shinoski.
Good evening, Director Kalis. Long time no see in that seat, so it is good to see you again. But I do, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation this evening. And for first answering some of my questions in regards to the tennis court and what will happen to the softball field. But I'd like to know, first, in thinking of, it's a beautiful space, and so I'm excited about that. But in thinking about the space, I love the watching area where students will be able to watch and, you know, tinker with their robotics. And so, is the space large enough to have competitions, or is it just small enough to support students on a daily basis? What are your thoughts?
It's really designed to support our students, our CTE students. The competitions typically, Berkeley just hosted actually the first, the first, first tournament, which is the robotics tournament, and it's regional, it's named first. And those competitions tend to be so large, that was held in the Donahue Gym. So the robotics field is large enough for two robots to compete, but it's not large enough to host a competition.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'm a little interested that we are getting ready to vote on this tonight, and I would have liked to hear a little bit more community input and to see how the community, especially the Berkeley High community and students, are reacting to this new design. So I would, I would love to hear that information, and so maybe that could be in a board memo, or we can hear, next time you come to the board, we can hear a presentation or an update of that community engagement piece, because I know that that's gonna be really important, especially knowing that there has been a lot, which we're very grateful for, but a lot of construction that has been happening on Berkeley High's campus. And so I, you know, I just want to hear from the community. I also would like to know, do we, two more questions, sorry, do we anticipate any new? do we, two more questions, sorry, do we anticipate any new hires that may come as an additional cost to the district? For example, the field and the addition of the bathroom may prompt a additional custodian? Have we thought about additional hires that may have to come because of this project?
Yeah, so it's something that we are studying right now, and what we're doing is we're really looking at the run sheets for our custodians, really to understand if we would have to add extra FTE for custodial. And in regards to the community engagement, I'm happy to talk about that at the future board meeting or send a memo, but just so you know, we did already do some community engagement on this project, and it was very well received. It also has the full support of all the admin and many of the others at the high school.
Good, that's good to hear, so thank you for that. And then my final question is where does this fall on our list of priorities for our current maintenance and our new, potentially new construction for the district? So where does this fall in our list of priorities?
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you a number as far as where it falls in the list of priorities, as I've explained to the board in other meetings. We, we run off of our priority list, but then what we also do is we look at how much money we have based on other projects to see where we can slide other projects in. This, the, the budget for this, for this project, where this is coming from, is originally we had several million dollars allocated for G one oh seven, one oh nine. As we started to study the design of that, it was clear that it wasn't going to be enough, right? But that was at the same timing when we were really starting to get some solid partnership with the city around the possibility of parking permits to not do the parking garage. So this idea came up, and when we started to really sort of sketch it out and looked at it, what we saw was we can solve the issue of the CTE space, not enough gen ed classrooms, additional parking,
Tennis courts.
Right, some equity for the boys and girls, baseball and softball teams, and also tennis courts for the exact same money. So we were able to shift the, the money that was allocated for that marquee project of the Milvia Street project to this and solve a whole lot more issues and really benefit not only our BHS students, but our staff, but also the community by adding the tennis courts and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Shinoski, follow up questions?
Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm really excited about the creative thinking that went into this whole project in response to community input regarding the parking garage, the Milvia Parking Garage. So I'm really glad to see that we are taking important steps, not only to try and eliminate costs associated with driving to school and work, but also that these plans now expand our gender neutral bathrooms, our staff bathrooms. They give us tennis courts that I know our tennis teams have been asking for for many, many years, and additional CTE space, which I hope will come with additional advocacy for CTE programs and career pathways. And I'm also excited that those administrative office space elsewhere on the campus, so that we can be sure that we have eyes in more than just one location during the day. I know that there are community concerns about the impacts of the, you know, the houses right around Mollering Field, especially in consideration with, in consideration of agreements that were made in the past regarding that space. And so I know you mentioned that there would be a neighborhood survey. I'd also like to know when we can expect to see the schedulers sort of analysis of the impacts, the actual impacts of lights, and I'd also like to know if we are anticipating a PA system there. And then finally, how do we expect that community engagement to roll out? And how are we anticipating to address some of the concerns that we know will, that neighbors may have?
Sure. Yeah, so we did hear from a few of the neighbors, and when I say a few, I think it was a total of five or six neighbors around Mollering Field, and we did meet with them, and it was an open meeting, and that's who attended. And we absolutely gave them the opportunity to speak to their concerns, and we listened to that, and we committed to looking at it. In regards to a PA system, I think it's really to be determined. I personally don't know if it's needed, but I'm not, I'm not an expert in that. That's not my thing. One of the things that we did do is with the architect that's doing the design here is because there is question as to whether or not you really need two fields or really need two, the lights. And according to our athletic directors, who are experts in this, they're absolutely certain that we do, but what we've asked our architect to do is actually go out and bring on an independent sports scheduling consultant to really verify and not only verify and validate that, but also to just put some creative thinking to it, because it's very possible that somebody from the outside might see something that we're missing. So I'll have to get back to you on a timeline to when that's being done. I don't know. And then the lighting studies are currently being done by our, by one of the engineering consultants for our architect, but there will be more studies that come out of that with an environmental impact review, and that process typically takes about a year for to do the EIR. So there'll be a few updates throughout the next year on that, but the, the, the final analysis, right? The final environmental impact report is about twelve months away. The, as far as the community engagement and what that's going to look like, typically we do anywhere from one to three community engagement meetings. We've already done one in regards to BHS, but I consider this to be a little bit separate, even though it's part of the same project. What that schedule will look like will really be informed by the survey participation that we see and what the feedback is from that survey that goes out to all of South Berkeley, because that'll kind of give us an idea of really what we need to ramp up to do to make sure to listen and to address everybody's concerns.
Yeah, Director Shinoski.
Just quickly, how are we going to be distributing the survey and, you know, ensuring as much participation as possible? Thanks.
Yeah, so the survey will go out just like the, the big postcard everybody gets right now in the mail with all of the community meetings. They will be going out via a mailer for, it's, I believe it's a one mile radius, but please don't quote me on that, around Mollering Field to start, but there is some caveats to that, like the business section, the business area we don't need to send to. So we're looking at that, but then also what we intend to do is try to not only use the district's mailing lists, digital mailing lists, but possibly partner with any city council members who might be willing to send it out to their areas and things like that.
Great, Director Babett, you have questions?
Yes, thank you so much for this presentation. It is certainly a pleasure that we were able to approve consent item twelve point seven, which is the approval of formal cancellation of Milvia Street Project. And when we were talking about this in our two by two committee with the city officials, it really was a driving force in their willingness to, to help us with the parking permit issue so that we could continue this design. So it's great to see this coming into fruition again this evening. I have a couple of questions around the softball field, because I don't want to end up with the softball coaches working on getting softball back for the next twenty years as our tennis teams have been doing. So can you speak more to, I noticed you said the admin approved, but what were the softball and baseball coaches' actual feedback? Is one question. Second, with the gender neutral bathrooms, just want to ensure that they won't be a single stall restrooms, that they will be more than one stall. And then for the tennis courts, this may be more for the superintendent. Will we be able to offer tennis as a, as a gym class, as a PE class as well, just to have more use of those courts during the school day?
Sure. So in regards to the coaches, we work primarily through the athletic directors, and the athletic directors one hundred percent support this project. They're really excited about this project, and I even spoke with Ross Parker just a few days ago via email, and he's like, how do we help advance this project? So we, we've got a lot of support there for not only baseball and softball, but also for tennis. Your second question in reference to the gender neutral restrooms, there will be both single stall and multi-stall gender neutral restrooms as part of this project. And then the third question, it's absolutely programmatic, so I will defer to the superintendent or one of my colleagues.
Now, we're just going to say yes, we can definitely explore the idea of using the courts for PE and having tennis as a PE option.
Great, thank you. And just as we look at our current issues with our gender neutral bathrooms, I believe one of the issues is that they are single stall, so as much as we could not duplicate that problem with, with the new building, I would strongly encourage us to do so.
Well, stay tuned, because we have another project coming that's adding another sixteen gender neutral restrooms on the campus, two restrooms, one for students, one for staff, both that are eight stalls each.
Thanks. And Director Kalis, I know you talked about the lights for a couple of the other sports, but I had a question about tennis in particular. Did the tennis coaches like the lighting design on those courts? Because I know that they had specifications for JV practices.
Yes, we've spoken to the tennis coaches, as well as the athletic directors, again, met with them in my office a few times, and we have a lot of support around this project.
Great, thanks. Director Babett.
Did you have a question, Dr. Chang?
I did, but why don't you go ahead first?
Okay, we did get a letter back in February from about ten community members in that neighborhood. Are, are those people you've already engaged with, or are those people in phase two of your community engagement?
When you say the neighborhood, are you referencing for Mollering Field?
Yes.
Yeah, we did hold a meeting. I believe five or six showed up, but we absolutely listened. We, we tried to address some of their concerns in the meeting, but we committed to the studies that we are doing to really understand and report back what those impacts would look like.
Thank you, Director Chang.
Yes, this is kind of a follow up to Director Babett's question as well. And I think in facilities, we've talked about this before, and it was a pleasure to, to see this emerge, and I'm very excited about this. In terms of the sharing of the field with both the baseball and the softball team, did the consultant do some engagement there in addition with the ADs with regard to physical access and programmatic access in terms of the two teams having equitable use of that space?
Yeah, so that's where it's really critical that the athletic director, who is the, who they are, we have two athletic directors for the high school, they do all of the scheduling to ensure equitable access, but that's where our third-party independent sports scheduler can come in and try to, try to offer some assistance with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any additional questions before we move on to our next item?
Can you clarify the motion that needs to be made?
Yeah, you need a motion to approve the current design.
Yeah, it's approving the schematic design as well as the full budget for the project, because the, what we, what the board originally approved was just the two point five to start the design process, and this actually allocates the rest of the money to the project budget and allows us to move further with the design.
Wait, is there a motion to approve the additional schematic design?
I have another question, just a budgetary question. So that brings the total amount to, for the project to how much?
I believe total for all four areas that we're doing was twenty-seven point five, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, any additional questions before I call for the motion? No, okay. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion moved by Director Shinoski, seconded by Vice President Brown, all directors in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect, we must do a roll call vote for this.
Student Director Ling, she hopped off the meeting. Ms. Charles, do you need to do a roll call vote or no? Because she's no longer, okay, great. Did everyone vote?
Aye.
Aye? Director Chang?
Yes, I also.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Thank you, Director Kalis.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to agenda item thirteen point two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget reductions. Colleagues, I'm going to ask for a five-minute break before we move on to that item.
Yeah, you want to sit in the middle?
No, there's three of us, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't care. You can sit next to Sean. So what I have to remember is this damn click, that thing never works. Why do they do these breaks? We never did that.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for indulging the board on that extended break that we have. Just to make the community aware, Director Vasudev had a family emergency, and so she needs to leave this evening, and so I will be conducting the rest of this evening's board meeting. Before we begin with our first action item or second action item of the evening, we do, board need to amend the agenda to actually make a change. So item, the way that it is listed right now under discussions, we have item fourteen point one, which is the L cap development and recommendations. And then followed by that, we have item fourteen point two, which is the Oxford surplus update discussion regarding our property options for Oxford Street. And so what we'll need to do is we need to switch those two items, fourteen point one and fourteen point two. So is there a motion on the floor to make those adjustments?
No move.
It has been moved by Director Shinoski, is there a second?
A second.
It has been directed seconded by Director Chang. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
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 Nays have the same sign. Abstentions, hearing none, the motion passes, and so we will make that adjustment to our agenda tonight. We will continue with item thirteen point two, followed by that, we will have item fourteen point two, followed by item fourteen point one. So now we have reached our action item thirteen point one, and we will hear the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget reductions presentation. Let us please welcome Associate Superintendent Pauline Faldensby, as well as Associate Superintendent Samantha Tobias Espinosa, and Director of Special Education, Sean Massinger. Thank you.
So good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Ford Mortel. She narrows her eyes. But this evening I'll be presenting the budget balancing proposals. And you notice we're presenting this as a budget balancing proposal and not necessarily a reduction, because there are some recommendations to actually look at the revenue side as well as the expenditure side. So again, this presentation is grounded in our mission as we focus on our four Es, excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment. The agenda, we're going to be looking at the target, the genesis of us having to come up with these budget reductions. We want to also include what's not in the target at this time. And then we're going to be looking at the the budget balancing proposals, taking you through the revenue and expenditures, reminding you of the strategies and our and our core values. And then we're going to be looking at the justification for each proposal to balance our budget. And then we have a next steps section. And what's the board being asked to do tonight? We're asking you to review and discuss the six point nine million dollars of budget balancing proposals. We brought this to you, two board, two board meetings in succession. They were on the board agenda, but it wasn't a presentation item. So these should not be brand new. We have presented them to the board before, and we're asking you to vote at this time, whether it's yes, you agree with the proposal, no, you do not agree, or not now, or you need additional information. So let's discuss the target and the genesis of the target. At the second interim, we brought you our multi-year projection, and this is actually where we determined what the target would be, not only to balance the budget in terms of ensuring we had a positive ending fund balance, but we also started to look at our our deficit spending. So at that time, we came up with a budget adjustment target of seven point one million, and that's ongoing. And then we also said that we would need an additional two point six million in twenty five, twenty six, to ensure that that year was was balanced. So by coming up with this target, we ensured that we had a balanced budget and would have a positive certification from Alameda County Office of Ed. And what's not in this target are any additional asks that that have come up since the second interim. So we're also going to be engaging S back in terms of looking at not only budget balancing solutions, but also trying to address additional needs as they come up. So let's look at the budget balancing proposals, just in terms of what our approach was, the revenue driven proposals. We're looking at alternative funding sources. We're looking at the impact of transferring in revenue from other sources or transferring expenses out. And then we're also looking at our revenue based on our revised enrollment assumptions. And then we're also going to be looking at prior year carryover. So this is our approach when we're looking at revenue driven proposals. And then we also look at expenditure proposals, and they're listed here. We transfer expenses into other funding sources. We eliminate expenses covered in other funding source, other funding sources. So you'll be hearing a bit of each of these proposals as we move forward with the six point nine million dollars. And again, we're also grounded in our core value of resource allocation, equity, transparency, excellence, engagement, sustainability, and stability. So now we're going to look at our six point nine million dollars in budget balancing solutions, and I'm going to have Assistant Sam is going to help us explain some of these, well, one of these, as is our executive director, Sean.
Man, Sean.
Yeah. So so we're going to be going through these as they come, as they arise, we'll have provide additional information for the board. So the first one that we're looking at is actually a revenue option. So you you may be familiar with our Fund Twenty, which is our other post employment retirement reserve. And this this reserve is used to house the amount that we collect at every payroll to meet our obligation for other post employment benefits. It doesn't count towards a liability because we're not in a dedicated trust. So we're setting aside money to be prudent. That fund has about seven million dollars in that balance in there right now. It's funded every month when we run our payroll. So what we're proposing is for one year, we would transfer the savings that that's generated from Fund Twenty, that's the six hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. And then we're also suggesting transferring an additional amount for the total transfer of two point, was that two point one million dollars? So this, you may see, we have different columns, we have ongoing and one time. This is a one time proposal. So whereas it would help us in twenty four, twenty five, we will have to revisit it when we're looking at twenty five, twenty six, because this is a proposal just for one time. The other proposal that we're looking at is staffing formula, staffing formula and enrollment changes. This is something that we'll be putting in the budget anyway. It's not a unique situation. This is one of the assumptions that we look at every year when we're constructing our budget. So based on the teacher template, which was already discussed with P and O, we're going to be actually having less teachers based on the formula, which will save the general fund seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And based on our enrollment change, we're projecting an increase of one point seven. And we've been asked how, what's the, I mean, it's an unbalanced approach, right? We're reducing teachers, but the formula is based on actual classrooms. And then the the enrollment is based on the projections that we get from from Francisco's office. And we're also transferring funding for one, a point five position to another funding source. So this is another strategy that we talked about. And then we're looking at our vacancy and and eliminating positions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent.
So looking at our vacancies that are funded by unrestricted general fund, we reviewed all of our vacancies and determined which positions we could eliminate without it being a harm to our students or to our programs. And so in the classified world, that would be one point oh, from B C C E. And in the certificated, it would be five point four F T E from B F T and two point oh from Yuba for a total of a million dollars.
So you you can ask questions at the end, so we're just going to press on with the other recommendations at this time. So then we looked at our operations, and we determined that we had one, one time proposal, which is looking at our indirect costs, which is set by the C D E based on information that we give, that we provide to them. So they, we're actually having an increase in our rate in twenty four, twenty five, and we estimate that's going to generate about sixty thousand dollars in one time revenue. We also looked at our lines, our elevator lines that weren't being used, that was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And then Zoom, this was a pretty controversial proposal. I I should mention that in S back, we had three voting sessions. We had a voting session on the thirteenth, then we had one on the I have to go back, I kept pressing this still. Then we had one, I think it was the twenty seventh, and then they voted as to which of those proposals were going to come to the board. So what we're bringing to you tonight has already been vetted by S back and voted on S back to actually bring to the board for 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 proposed for approval. So the other section that we have, and I can hardly read that one, so I need or the operation, so the other one is, hold on, our family engagement platforms. We now have three different programs that do pretty much the same thing. We're trying to eliminate a duplication duplication of services, and we're estimating that at seventeen thousand. We may have additional information that may reduce that, but we'll bring it back to the board. And then we talked about our Zoom, I actually started talking about that one. So Zoom actually got a seven to six vote to bring it to the board tonight. So there's a little bit of discussion around that item. And then with our utilities, we're we're having a new provider for SPUR, which is our natural gas, that's going to save us a hundred thousand dollars. And P G and E, we're looking at a difference delivery service method that's going to generate an additional eighty one thousand dollars. Our overtime and our our P D, we're requesting that staff and managers reduce these costs by fifty percent. So when we're allocating the budget, we'll be allocating fifty percent less in both of these categories. And then the last one, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director. And then, um, the last one, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director. Massing, Sean.
AKA Sean. Is it, I don't think it's on the slide, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Uh, so one of my responsibilities as the Director of Special Education is to develop programs that serve students in the spirit of our mission and B U S D, our special education mission and our four Es. Um, and to do it in a way that builds consistency and capacity in a cost-efficient manner. Um, so, uh, one of the things that we're proposing, um, and you know, Seneca has served our students really well over the last sixteen years in our counseling of rich classrooms. Um, and we believe it is in our best, best interest of our students, um, to create our own internal program, um, using our own staff that provides some flexibility, creativity and a little bit more individualization of the services we're providing. Um, so we, uh, want to, uh, hire a couple of social workers internally. Uh, we want to, um, have four registered behavior technicians working with our teams. Uh, and then a few different, you know, budget items to help, you know, furniture, make things look nice for rooms, things like that for counseling. Um, and we've found an anticipated, um, savings of six hundred thousand dollars from, from what we would be paying, um, a contractor to do.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sean. So, um, so with that, that brings us to the six point nine million dollars in budget balancing proposals. Four point eight would be ongoing and two point two will be one time. So, um, in terms of looking at next steps, um, we will be having meetings, um, with S back, continued meetings with S back. We have three meetings scheduled, but we will add meetings as needed. Um, we're going to be evaluating budget requests that are not included in the budget target. Um, we'll be submitting additional budget balancing proposals to the board for, for approval. And of course, we'll be impacted by the governor's new revise, which is going to probably, um, impact our assumptions that we'll be using to build the budget. And of course, we'll be bringing the adopted budget to the board, um, at the June meeting, the final budget. So with that, um, do we have any questions?
Thank you all so much, uh, for this presentation and for the intentionality, uh, behind, uh, the recommendations that you are, all are making from staff. Um, I also want to just appreciate, you know, so many districts call it budget reductions. And so to hear that we are reframing it or renaming it, um, our budget balancing is so appropriate and so timely because that is exactly what we're doing. It's not just about reductions, but it is about balancing our budget, um, in support of our priorities for our young people. So thank you for that. Uh, I have questions, but since I'm assuming the role of chair, I will be gracious and allow my board colleagues to ask their questions and I'll save mine to the end.
Well, I'm ready. I have six questions, so I may have to come back. I understand.
If you, if you don't mind, I think the best thing that we can do is go ahead and ask half of your questions and then we'll jump to other board directors and then we'll come around for a second round of questions, if you all are okay with that.
Um, first, I just have a general question around, um, L cap supplemental funds. Um, I noticed you talked about shifting, uh, other sources. And I just want to know if anything has changed in the requirements that, um, allows us to, to, uh, supplement uh, the general fund with L cap supplemental funds, because when it first started, it was the big no-no is that you don't, these funds are for new services and they're not meant to, uh, replace general fund expenditures.
So I'm going to have Associate Superintendent, um, Jill Hogan, I respond to that.
Uh, that's correct. So the supplemental funds in the L cap budget, which are currently around five point mil, five point six million dollars, are intended to serve those unduplicated, uh, student groups most directly. So we should not be supplanting that with general fund.
Great, thank you. Second question is around, um, the five point six F T E reduction. Um, I know that our teacher template um, has yet to kind of equate for equity. It's kind of a numbers in, numbers out strategy. And so I just want to make sure that, um, schools like Longfellow and Sylvia Mendez, which have a higher need of, of student population, aren't going to be, um, targeted in this five point six reduction of F T.
So this five point six, this five point six is actually based on the teacher template. So it's allocated based on projected enrollment for each site. So, um, there's additional funding, that's not, or additional staffing, that's not from the teacher template. But this is the formula that we've vetted, we've talked to P and O, with H R and ourselves have talked about this. So it is based, um, and allocated in conjunction with, um, the measure and in conjunction with, um, with B S A.
Yes, I understand. My question is, is it going to impact however high concentration of need school sites?
Um, there is no reduction at Sylvia Mendez for next year. Um, so those five point six do not impact Sylvia Mendez, um, from their current level of staffing. And for, um, Longfellow, it is a reduction um, in the seventh and eighth grade, which is, has larger class sizes. So when we have a large group of sixth graders that move into seventh and eighth grade, there's typically a reduction um, in the seventh and eighth grade, and that's what we're seeing. It's only a point four.
Okay, great. Thank you. That gives me comfort. And my third question is around, um, uh, when we talked about the vacancy reduction, um, you kind of said high level by, by union. That doesn't give me kind of an understanding of, uh, where people may have already been doing double time to make up for the fact that these people aren't here. So if, is there a way we could get an actual full list of, of this million dollar vacancy reductions?
So before any of these are finalized, any of these, um, eliminations or reductions, um, they will come back to the board specifically for those exact positions. Um, this is the overall picture of what we, um, are looking at. Um, so I've also shared with the unions, um, which positions we are looking at. And, um, they have the opportunity to also, um, bargain, um, about the effects of those, um, eliminations. And so, uh, we will be holding sessions to discuss that with the union as well before they come to you.
My understanding is we're being asked tonight to, to say yes or no, though, right?
You're being asked tonight to approve the, um, general idea of eliminating vacancies for about the amount of a million dollars, um, but not the specific positions, exactly which ones. Thank you.
Director Shonaski or Director Chang, do you have any questions? Director Shonaski.
I just have one question, um, for Sean. Um, they, I know that Seneca is, is really sort of the premier service provider for some of the things that we've utilized them for. And I'm just wondering what we've done this year to ensure that the services that go to our students, um, are, you know, at the same level and that there's not any disruption because of the shift from contractor to, um, to internal, uh, employees. And, and also one other thing is, I guess I'm putting this out there as something that I'd like for us to consider is additional ways that we can utilize, uh, existing employees instead of contractors and other spaces for the remaining needs.
Uh, so yes, we've been in conversation with, uh, Seneca itself. Um, I met a few weeks ago and then we met actually this week and we'll be meeting next week. Um, we've done a lot of planning with an internal team, working with, uh, Principal Regozza and, um, his staff, um, to shift over. Um, so we, you know, there's, it's always a, a bit of a challenge to shift to a new program and I'm certain there will be some dips and and roller coaster ride a little bit, but we've done a lot of planning and ahead of time and, um, and we feel like we have a good, uh, number of staff that are already at, uh, Brooklyn High School that can do some of this work as well as bring in additional staff onboard.
Director Chang.
Yes, please. Thank you. Um, and, uh, Director.
Mansinger.
Mansinger. Make sure I got that correct. Um, is following up on the question from, uh, Director Shonaski. Uh, and I, I also support when it's possible, um, shifting to, um, local, uh, staff to provide our programs and services. Um, in terms of the capacity that you will be replacing with the contractors, do you envision that it's relatively the same in terms of replacing the contractors at six hundred thousand dollars? Or will you have to rebuild capacity internally in order to catch back up with these savings?
No, this will be the amount that we pay. So we're reducing the amount that we would pay, uh, Seneca. So, um, the, the additional hiring of the two social workers internally and, um, using our registered behavior technicians, um, that would be, um, that would be subtracted from the amount that we're using from Seneca. So we're seeing a six hundred thousand dollar savings.
Oh, sorry.
All of these.
It's kind of like, oh.
I'm going to start over unless.
That's okay. Um, you, would you want him to start up, ask you for a video?
If you don't, if you don't mind, um, so that it'll be captured on video and audio, do you mind starting over?
Uh, so, um, yes, the amount that we're, um, the amount that we're reducing is coming from what we would have paid the Seneca contract. So we, we'd be hiring an additional two social workers to, um, put that in us. We're not spending additional amounts. We're actually saving.
So walk me through that process real quickly. So instead of the, um, contractors, you're hiring two internally to.
Yes.
And then those two persons, do they already have other responsibilities? Or they can be shifting out of their prior positions?
These will be folks that we're bringing on from new additional staff. Yes.
Oh, I see.
And we'll be creating, uh, we're actually in need of creating a social worker position too, that will be crossing your desks as well.
And so there'll be positions that'll be inside the district, non-contract.
Yes. Um, uh, the registered behavior technicians will likely be through a contract agency. And the hope is down the road is that we actually also convert that over to our own internal folks as well.
Uh, thank you. And, and another question, um, this might be for Associate Superintendent Falmesby. Um, you referred to the reduction of overtime by fifty percent.
Yes.
Um, which had a number of nine, about ninety four thousand. Were you referencing P D as well? I thought you said P D.
P D, professor. Um, I don't, I'm not sure, um, for the, for the P D. Yeah. So we're, so we're only, um, propose, we're proposing that only essential P D is offered. So we're not eliminating it, um, altogether.
Can you, can you, Associate Superintendent Falmesby, just to let the record reflect, uh, the ninety four thousand dollars that you're referencing is specifically for travel. And I think P D follows, falls under that. The reduction overtime, uh, overtime expenses is two hundred and forty three thousand, three, nine hundred and eighty three dollars. And so specific to travel.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And so P D would fall under as, when we're saying P D, we're talking about professional development. So we're referencing.
Yeah, do a bit of travel as it relates to, um, professional development.
Travel for.
And, and to profess. So this is a common strategy when we're, um, looking at budget reductions. This is one of the areas that we investigate. So it is professional development that's, um, necessary for like their, um, their credential, that would not be impacted. Um, yeah.
So this would not be internal P D. This would be going to a conference, um, going to, um, things that are not required or not something that we provide in-house. Um, so there's a lot of conferences, professional organizations out there that, um, at times we've traveled to go to these conferences and all of that. There are some that are more required. I believe Avid is one of our required ones. Um, I believe there's some other, uh, programs that require us to attend certain P Ds. And those would not be included in this. It would be the ones that we, um, choose to go to.
And just to clarify, would it impact P Ds such as, um, those that are conducted internally for, um, uh, responding to, uh, allegations of discrimination?
No, not at all.
Uh, great. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, uh, Director Chang. I wanted to, uh, turn our attention back to, um, the, uh, family communications platform. So I heard the justification, the rationale was to kind of reduce it so that we can, uh, include one. Did we land on a name, one, the specific platform that we are going to go with, as many are mentioned?
We're still determining that, um, and we're working with Max on that. Um.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I wanted to ask, uh, just to get a bird's eye view of what's going on, the S back conversations. To hear that there's a seven, there was a seven to six vote around Zoom, um, seems pretty interesting. And so what, uh, what was the, the challenge in that space around moving forward or not moving forward with Zoom?
I think, I think this is, I, I think the superintendent can answer that.
Okay. Vanity. Um, honestly, so I, I, it was on me to introduce each of these, um, budget, uh, balancing strategies. And there was a little bit of bias when I introduced that one, um, you know? And then the, the crowd or the, the committee members, you know, went with me and talking about all the different features that we, um, have with Zoom that we didn't feel, uh, were, um, available for Google Meet. Uh, and so it was, it was really that. And then we brought it back again. And it, it was too late. It caught like wildfire, but there are a couple of folks actually talked about the benefit of, um, saving thirty thousand dollars and foregoing things like the different filters and the lip gloss and everything that Zoom brings. Thank you.
I can add to that quickly too, just for being the Director of Special Education, we do a lot of virtual, um, I E Ps. So I think that there was some concern that how, um, Google was in the past. It was not very, uh, it didn't have a lot of ease of use. But they've apparently done a lot of upgrades and all that. So it'll just take a little bit of, um, training to get our folks, you know?
Okay. Thank you all so much. I hope that the community will be able to survive without reactions and Zoom backgrounds. Okay, I'll turn it, uh, back over to Director Babbitt and the rest of the board for the second round of questions.
I think you, um, so I had a question around savings with our, um, Milwaukee Forest. Um, we should have a water reduction. Are, are we accounting for the water reductions?
We have, we'd have, we'd have to research that and get back to you.
Okay, um, uh, that's a, that was a huge goal and an outcome of, um, putting those forests at King and at, um, the various school sites was the amount of money that we would save in water. Um, and then, um, in the spirit of the, the parent advisory committee comments, um, when we're talking about, um, using our contractors and having a redundancy of services, um, how are we addressing the root causes of why they were brought on, um, i- initially? Um, because if we're going to, uh, really try and focus on doing a lot of these things ourselves, we also need to understand, uh, what accountability measures we're going to put in place, how we're going to further the organizational clarity and how we're going to offer the same kind of small group, uh, services, um, internally.
So, um, I will let Sean speak about that in terms of sped.
Yes, I guess the question is, you know, if we could do it ourselves, why were we already using Seneca, for example? Um, and how do we expect that we're going to?
Right.
And, and the same goes with many of our other programs, which our, um, families continue to say that they need and enjoy and, uh, want us to continue.
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak for, um, Special Education Services. So, so Seneca has been here for sixteen years. So this was prior to me coming. Um, but I'm always looking for opportunities to bring in our own staff. Um, sometimes we use contractors when we can't fill positions. Um, sometimes, uh, so they're hard to fill positions, we'll use contractors. Uh, but we're always on, we're always looking to try to hire our own folks. Um, so, um, sometimes we will use contractors as maybe they have a specialty skill that we don't have, um, that we need to bring in, um, to do additional work, like a, for example, registered behavior technician. Um, there were, there were some work before I had arrived as well to try to, um, have our own behavior intervention specialists within our district. Um, but due to COVID and, um, before that, it just didn't, uh, it didn't roll out and then a change of leadership through a couple of hands. Um, so it's something that I'd like to do down the road additionally. Um, I know we have a lot of contractors that are, um, you know, are, are instructional aides. Um, and we would need to, you know, start doing more work to try to hire our own folks.
Um, my last question, um, while we're on sped before you guys answer, is, um, really around, um, medical reimbursement. Uh, if we could do more work to make sure that, uh, beyond just medical providers, that, uh, we can really hone in on how we could increase our partnerships with other personal healthcare carriers to do some medical reimbursement. Really hone in on how we could increase our partnerships with other personal healthcare carriers to do some medical reimbursement as possible.
Yeah, we do. I, I don't know if that was a question or just a statement. But we, we are doing a lot of work right now on Medi-Cal. We're actually right now looking into doing it also on the general education side of the house. Uh, but currently, right now, our school psychologists, our speech and language therapists, our occupant, there's our physical therapists. As well as our nurse, um, and our um, L, our uh, LVNs. Which I'm totally forgetting, but their nurses at our sites, um, we're all billing. Um, so we have a certain amount of money coming in. We do use that money to supplement and buy things um, that we need um, for to provide services for children.
Is it only uh, Medi-Cal or are we able to partner with um, Kaiser and Sutter Delta and other providers like?
I'm not aware of those opportunities. Um, right now it's um, Medi-Cal. Um, we do work with families, you know, if they have insurance and things like that, uh, you know, we ask, but. Otherwise, um, any student that has Medi-Cal and they've checked the box, um, and all that, we do, um, we do um, receive um, reimbursements for that.
Are there any?
Um, I just wanted to finish responding um, about for other programs. Um, we are still evaluating um, some of our programs and resources where we have some duplication. The only thing we actually have on this list tonight has to do with um, our family communication platform. Um, which is how we were communicating and we ended up with multiple um, different services to communicate with families electronically. Um, and part of that was during COVID, um, and um. The different sites and different ways we're communicating, so we're evaluating all of those. And looking at whether or not we have a true duplication and what we can do to work on that for that seventeen thousand dollars. Um, but we are still evaluating all of our programs and still working with Sback at looking at all of our programs and making sure that we're looking at a duplication as well as the. Accountability and how do we um, look at the different programs that serve our students that are considered by some to be duplications.
Yes, a- and I guess my um, feedback is as you go forward in that process. To really hone in onto why they're being brought in and um. Can we do it ourselves in the same way with fidelity with the smaller numbers um, and get the same value?
Understood.
Thank you.
Director, I just wanna, um, sorry, Director Babbitt, I just wanna um, echo that our core values of resource allocation, we explore and evaluate. All of our uh, reduction and balancing strategies against them. And one of them is equity. And so we're always asking ourselves why. Was there the need for that program to begin with? And was there a specific focus and what is it um, that we can or cannot do to meet that goal? So that, that is always what we hold in mind. And then we have another value um, around sustainability. So asking ourselves. To the, to the point of your other part of your question is, can we, can we do the work and can we not just do it for a year or six months, but can we do it and sustain it? So um, as, as Sam said, we are doing a lot of evaluation of our programs. We're definitely coming in with that lens of equity and sustainability. Um, as well as excellence, which is where we look at um, data and engage in continuous improvement to see if the program is doing what we intended for it to do. Director Shansky.
This is just a follow-up to a question that Director Babbitt asked earlier, um, with respect to the vacant positions. So if we're not actually deciding on which positions will be eliminated right now. I'm assuming we have some kind of contingency plan in place if. For some reason, we don't want to freeze or eliminate as many positions as would be the million dollars in this particular vote.
Yes, um, we, we do, um, and we are looking at other, um, what else is out there. We do also have a bunch of vacancies that are non. Unrestricted general fund that we could do a resource allocation possibly, or, or some things like that. Um, that we are not bringing forward tonight. Um, but uh. We, we wanted to bring forward just the piece of the unrestricted general fund that we were looking at.
Great. So there's enough flexibility there that we'll be able to. Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any additional questions? Does every board member feel like they've had an ample, ample amount of time to ask questions? Okay, great. With that being said, uh, Board of Education, we are ready for the vote. Remember tonight, we are voting on um, the. Recommendation from staff to have uh, six point nine million dollars in a balanced budget or balancing that budget balancing. Uh, and uh, this presentation that we have received tonight has also, uh, just to let the record reflect, has also been uh, presented and. Brought to us by the superintendent staff as well as uh, the Sback committee. So. It is important to note that. And so with that being said, is there a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation?
A move to approve the recommendations.
It's been moved by Director Shansky. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Chang. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of I.
Uh-huh.
I. Opposers have the same sign. Abstentions, the eyes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all so much for your presentation. We will now.
Thank you for that hard work and for getting these together.
Yeah, a- absolutely. Thank you for the hard, I agree with Director Babbitt. Thank you for the hard work. There are many school districts who are dealing with the challenges of balancing their budget right now. Um, especially uh, with the decrease to the COLA. And so. All of the work that you all did alongside the superintendent and the Sback committee to ensure that we were able to balance it. Without cutting super, super close to the classroom is very important. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Uh, we will now move to item fourteen point two, which will be, uh, remember, we made the adjustment to our agenda. So we're gonna move to item fourteen point two, which is the Oxford Surplus Update Discussion Regarding Surplus Property Options for eleven thirty Oxford Street. And we will receive uh, our presentation. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so with me tonight is Kelly Jorgensen, Vice President from Van Pelt Construction and Program Management Services. And she, uh, last time we were joined by Jennifer Gibb, uh, who was unable to make it tonight, but Kelly is here to offer some support if we need it.
It's just you.
It's me. It does not like me.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So if you recall, we brought this last year uh, to the board. And I know there were some questions and we went back and we looked at it. Um, but right now, what we're here to talk about this evening again is the seven eleven, the surplus property. Uh, we're up at eleven thirty Oxford Street. Under the statute, uh, the board has to have public discussion about this and then following that can move to a vote if you choose to. So tonight's agenda is really to discuss the post-student occupancy, the timeline of act, activities, activities. The appraisal for eleven thirty Oxford, uh, surplus property options. Discussion by the board and then recommendations for the next steps by the board. Okay, so recap of board questions from August of last year. Is what would the land be valued at if it was clear land, if we had knocked down the school? Uh, what would the land be valued at if it was subdivided? What was the potential value differential if the subdivided land had been, had individual utilities? And then has the district considered AB two ninety-five for the possible use for additional workforce housing? So as far as the first couple of questions, I think it's really important to understand that we are not developers. That's not what we do. Um, the facilities department nor Van Pelt, this is not something that's really in our bailiwick. And the reality is, is for us to even consider like clearing that land. We understand the landslide defamation report as well as the geotechnical issues that are up there. And the level of legal exposure that that opens to the district to start pulling those buildings down. If the possibility that that does create a slide is tremendous. Furthermore, it's not something that we would normally do, so we have no way to value that as clear land. Um, same thing as far as subdividing it and then subdividing it and trying to sell it off parcel at a time with and without utilities. When we consider the exposure that that opens us up to, it's, it's just too great. There was a question in that board meeting about, well, bring in consultants and see how much consultants can do to act as developers and so on and so forth. And what we quickly learned is that if we were to bring on any consultants. Anything that we saw in a difference of, of appraised value would really be chewed up with our costs that were going out. Lastly, in reference to AB two ninety-five workforce housing. The district has not done a whole lot of work on this, only because we haven't broken ground on our workforce housing project that we're already doing. We, the board is, has approved and we are moving forward with the workforce housing project at seventeen oh one San Pablo. And that is a hundred and three units, I believe. While the uh, or a hundred and ten, I can't remember. But while the participation rate does appear to be incredibly high from the surveys that have gone out. There, we won't know that until the, the, the. Our labor partners finish working with the developer. As far as the governance around that, the board approves that. And then we're ready to open and we have basically a lottery system in place for the tenants. We don't know for sure how, how full that building will be. So to consider doing workforce housing on this property right now is a bit premature. But it's also problematic in the sense of that we have to remember. The reason that the board did vote to approve to close and relocate Oxford was because the landslide defamation report. That report and, and also what was clearly articulated in the community meetings that we had. With not only the landslide experts, Alan Kropin Associates, but also the seismologists from Cal. Then I believe we had one from Cal Poly who was there, et cetera. But we closed that site out of an abundance risk of, at abundant caution, right? It was really about safety. It was very clear to the community and to the board. That it was not safe to house students there. So to consider building possibly multi-unit. Housing up there to sa- to house staff is problematic. Next slide. So this is just the timeline and where it's been updated since we last saw you, but it shows that. The governing board did authorize the seven eleven committee process, which is required by statute. Uh, we went through the process. Those were public meetings. Uh, the governing board did hear back about this in both March and August of twenty-three, and now we're back here again in uh, twenty twenty-four. So the appraisal for eleven thirty Oxford that was done by Yavina Young Incorporated. Um, they've done other appraisals for the district and they're very well-known in the Bay Area. They tend to be very fair and very accurate. They looked at the property details. They looked at the zoning. They looked at really making a recommendation of the best use of this property. And the valuation for the property as it stands, because again, we, there would need to be a developer that was willing to come in. To take on all the front, front-end work is about two million dollars. This is based on market value and the comparison is about thirty-six dollars per square foot. There's no income or cost approach. Uh, it's a unique property. It's, it's a school site. And then market impact, the value may change based on market conditions. So the surplus options for the board to really consider and discuss is the sale of the property. Uh, leasing the property, redevelopment of property, land exchange or other partnership opportunities. I don't recall if it's in one of my other slides, so I do wanna remind the board, one of the things that we did talk about. At the last meeting, because there was a question of, well, leasing it or just sort of holding on to it and waiting and see what happens with it. Is we get a lot of money from the school facilities program through the state of California. Um, to help with our modernizations and our new construction cost. If we sit on surplus land, we actually are not supposed to be applying for those funds. In the last five years, we've captured about thirty-eight to forty million dollars from the state. That we've used to offset our Fund Twenty-One, our bond funds and put towards our construction projects. And we currently have another roughly thirty-eight million dollars sitting in the queue. Twenty-eight million or being worked to be put in the queue, excuse me. Uh, twenty-eight million for these mandatory seismic upgrades that are required to the Berkeley Community Theater. As well as ten million for that same project due to urban density. So we do run the risk of significantly impacting what we can capture from the school facilities program if we just sit on the property. Next slide. So the sale of the property and what we tried to list here was really about opportunities and challenges. Um, it does generate revenue. There is a release of liability that's associated with this. There's liability in respect to not only the landslide, but also we have a lot of vandalism. We have a lot of uh. We have a lot of unauthorized entry into the site. And it's important to note that even with that unauthorized entry, it's our insurance that's still liable if someone gets hurt. Um, there's development of community asset. The challenge is unknown next use. Um, if the board were to opt to sell this, we can't necessarily control what that next use would look like. And then zoning for the future. If we lease the property, uh, it would generate revenue and it would repurpose the facilities in the space. But the board and the school district will still own the liability of the property. There's zoning considerations that will have to be taken in, into account. There's financial implications and also SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, that depending upon what that lease would be for. It could trigger some SEQA studies needing to be done and possibly mitigations. So redevelopment, land exchange, other partnership opportunities. The, the benefits and the opportunities are about cost sharing as well as optimized land use. Challenges, again, zoning considerations, liability of property, environmental concerns, funding, legal complexities, financial implications and SEQA. And at this point, we're here to answer any questions that we can, but really to try to help facilitate the conversation with the board around this.
Thank you so much, uh, Director Kalis, and welcome to you. Happy to have you here. So thank you for joining us. Uh, we'll begin our board questions with Director Babbitt.
Uh, yes, I, I remember these uh, presentations uh, very differently than you described uh, this evening. Uh, first and foremost, my understanding was the reason we had to evacuate Oxford had more to do with. The evacuation plan if there were an emergency. Uh, that there couldn't be a large number of fire trucks and parents coming to pick up their kids from that community. Was the bigger issue over the building being unstable to actually house students.
So it actually had to do with both. So what the landslide defamation report showed us. Was that over the years, even though the community as a whole has actually shifted, and I don't remember off the top of my head, I believe it was something like seven or nine feet. Right? The school buildings themselves have actually really performed very well. But the bigger concern around the landslide defamation to not only the possible damage to the buildings themselves. Is the fact of ingress and egress. It would be very difficult because of the narrow streets up there to get the first responders in. It'll also be equally difficult to get everyone out. And then there was a grave concern that was shared in the report about the hillside above Oxford. In the event of a massive event, an earthquake triggering a landslide. All of those homes and everything that sits above Oxford could potentially come down on Oxford. So your, your, your memory is absolutely correct that it had to do, that was, but that was only a piece of it.
So if the evacuation plan is, is the issue, right? And the same with our adult housing at Berkeley Adult School, we're no longer liable uh, for the building. It's the developers who are going to be liable. We have just leased the land. So I don't understand why we're applying that um. Ra- rationale that it's actually unsafe for people to live, because if it was really unsafe for people to live, nobody would be in that neighborhood. Right now, like they would be evacuated right now. So you're saying that we would take on this liability, but we wouldn't actually own the property, number one, even though it was workforce housing. And, and secondly, the community came out very strongly, uh, really identifying that that was the major uh, reason why we had to evacuate schools. The school.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm tracking it or understand the question. So.
I'm saying I disagree wholeheartedly that we couldn't use this site for workforce housing. And due to our own liability reasons, uh, as you said earlier.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not saying that you can't. What I'm saying is that depending upon the structure of the deal. Because if we lease the land, we do still have some liability. And it really depends on how the deal is structured. If the board were to choose to use this for workforce housing, y- you absolutely can. But I can't speak to what that deal would look like, only because it hasn't been created yet.
Okay, it was, it was characterized from what I heard as, as a bad idea for, for legal liability reasons in your presentation.
So I apologize if that's the case. It absolutely was not intended to be. It's just really about me trying to deliver information. That there could be some legal exposure, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Director Shansky.
Director Shinoski.
Couple of things. One, with regard to workforce housing. I thought that the other issue was the securing of funding for the development of workforce housing, that that was one of the big barriers because we would have to actually have a developer who would come in and clear the site, then build workforce housing and do that in an affordable way to actually make the, that housing accessible to our staff. So I, I thought that that was the big barrier to workforce housing. Or that was my recollection. The other, so that was just a comment. And one question I have is, I know that the community has been really engaged in this topic. And in the past, I've been careful to reach out to neighbors and I did not do that this time. I was out of town. So my apologies to anyone that's watching or in the audience. And I'm wondering if the, you know, I don't see neighbors here today and we didn't get any messages. So I'm wondering, has there been engagement about this particular decision making point? How much do the neighbors know about what's happening with the site at this time?
Uh, no ma'am, not at this time. This is just specifically for the discussion for the board. However, there is an extended, uh, public comment opportunity and that's the perfect time. And you may also email the board as always.
Yeah. So, excuse me. So first in regards to the funding, that is a big consideration. We don't know what it would cost, but we know that if it were not for the contribution of the city of Measure O, we would not have been able to move forward with the workforce housing project that we have. So in regards to any community engagement, we don't have, and this is something that we have struggled with for a while. We don't have access necessarily to community lists up there. One of the people who is in the audience right now does a tremendous job at actually communicating with the neighbors. Uh, and I do speak to her really often. So I know she absolutely did let the neighbors know, but beyond that, I, there's, yeah. There's not a whole lot else I can give you on that right now.
Director Chang has graciously allowed me to go next. You know, from what I'm hearing and from my memory of the last conversation, it seems like there is some interest from the board in terms of exploration for this site to, for what it's worth, to see if, if workforce housing is an opportunity. And so I think that before we, you know, will, before we completely rule it out, I, I would really like to request the next time you all come, if you could come with more information specifically to answer A, some of the questions that we had from the previous board meeting in regards to workforce housing. And then to address some of the, um, some of the concerns that were brought up by both Director Babett and Director Shinoski. You have a question after? Okay. Um, and so there's that. And then secondly, I know that the last time that we were here, we talked about the selling of the property and you also mentioned that tonight. And I was kind of stunned by the two million dollar appraisal quote that we received because I felt as though that was pretty low for, for a building or an area. First of all, for the building, secondly, for the area that it is in. I felt that that was really incredibly low. And I remembered asking the question about what the neighbors' response were to that and what our response was as a district to an appraisal value that was, that was so low. So I'm still interested to know that. And then in addition to that, when we had the presentation, there was a question or I asked a question about the city's interest in purchasing the, the land for, and the, the ideas were thrown out, land use for parks, recreation, things of those nature, things of that nature. And the response was that we had not yet entertained that conversation with the city and that we could not ask them if they were interested, but that it had to be addressed in some way from the city and we could respond. And so the recommendation was to figure out how we begin that conversation. So I would be interested to know where we are in terms of an update. And if in any way I misspoke on that one, please feel free to correct me.
Yeah. So we can absolutely begin the engagement with the, with the city, with the board direction to do that. And I think the appropriate place to do that would probably be at a two by two meeting. But as in regards to the value, we did try to update the slide and talk about the fact that why Yovino Young valued it as what it is, is primarily just comes down to as the zoning, the, the mixed use potentially, but also it's a very unique property. I know when Hillside sold many years ago, it, the board was faced with the same challenge in the sense of really understanding like why it was valued where it was. And it, it did come down to that. It's just school sites are unique properties. Did I get all your questions? I'm sorry.
Uh, you answered the first question about the, the first comment rather about the appraisal. I was wondering if you could answer the question about potentially coming back with the work for, with the, with the presentation around options for workforce housing. And then the third question, um, in terms of inviting the city, I believe you pretty much kind of answered that.
Yeah. So in regards, thank you. I'm sorry. I know I missed something.
So there is, and, and with the, you mentioned the two by two committee. So there has not been any conversation or any communication that has happened with the city from our end or from their end or whoever entertains the conversation.
Know what I took away, and I apologize if I missed it, but what I took away from the last meeting and so did my colleague was really to sort of look at and understand the different potential values with the different scenarios. So I absolutely trust that there was a question about talking to the city and unfortunately I missed that. So I apologize. In regards to workforce housing, can we come back? We can. But first, what we're going to have to do is we will put out an RFP for a feasibility study because we will need a developer to come in and do that, just like we did around the San Pablo project. And then that feasibility study would really look at the feasibility of doing workforce housing there. But it's, it's not only the feasibility of building it, but what the potential costs are to understand, is it something that we could do as a district without additional funding?
I'm, uh, I'm not sure that the feasibility study. Please, um, I mean this in the humblest way possible, but I think that that would just be a, a rope blocker. The feasibility study and taking the time to, to do that. I know that we've had plenty of studies already in terms of workforce housing. Unfortunately, the Oxford, although I thought it was last presentation, but the Oxford property has not been added to that. And so I don't know if a feasibility study is maybe the information that we are looking for other than some sort of a survey with the community. Not an entire feasibility study. I don't, I don't know what the workaround is for that. But I know that time isn't necessarily on our side. And so I.
We can survey the community, but what, and that will inform the board of the community's interest for that. But it won't help us with knowing ultimately what it would cost to do, what the feasibility is and how would we, how we would go about trying to fund that. So it's, 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 it's sort of only half the information if we go that route and we absolutely can. It's really at the direction of the board. I, 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 I'm looking at my colleague to see if I'm missing anything, but I, I worry that if we, if we survey the community of their interest, because I think that's what I hear you saying. If we do that, but without knowing actually if it's something that we could even do, does, I don't know that that's going to help. I, I won't help me to present up other options to the board.
Okay.
When you say, um, survey the community, I think she, what I interpret her to mean is, is there interest from a developer? Not necessarily surveying the community, but is there an interested buyer in the land to kind of move this project forward for either workforce housing or for any other type of housing? Because what I don't want to do is get two million dollars for a, a property that we know the house next door, which is much smaller, is going to sell for more than two million dollars potentially. So it would really be irresponsible, in my opinion, for us to just take this easy. It's, it seems to me that none of our questions were really diligently looked into or answered from August twenty third, twenty twenty three. And that I, I, I feel like I'm looking right at what I looked at a while ago with different answers. And so I'm also wondering, like, have you met with, has the facility subcommittee really met and taken a deep dive into this? Because I know when I was president, that was one of the things that I asked the facility subcommittee to do was to really look into this project and to come back with the board as a subcommittee with your recommendations. Has that happened at all? You can insert your own committee.
Yeah, um, I actually was raising my hand because I wanted to clarify. I don't feel unready to vote on this because I think we have discussed this pretty in depth. And my understanding is that there is, keeping the property does potentially give us a liability issue. Also can limit funding for other projects. And while I am a huge proponent of workforce housing, I don't think that this site is going to give us that opportunity because we don't have the Measure O money that we had at the adult school. We don't have somebody that's willing to invest and, and secure the funding and develop it. And there's a school already on the land, whereas at the adult school, what we had is we have a parking lot, right? So the development is very different. So.
I, I guess my, I really just wanted to know, has the facility subcommittee actually dealt with this in, in deep? Or is it just your opinion?
No, all of that information is from the facility subcommittee. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, when you say about rezoning, I know that I've personally talked to council members, which is why I'm kind of surprised because council members have already said, hey, uh, reach out to us when this comes because we can start working with our zoning commissions to actually do some rezoning work to get this done. And I know that I've, I've shared that information as well. So I'm, I'm really surprised that if the facility subcommittee has dealt into this, A, we don't have good answers to our questions. And B, what work has been done to really talk about the rezoning and to really work with the, with the city on this?
So again, there hasn't been work done in regards to workforce housing other than the conversations that have taken place and looking at the potential challenges in front of it. If the board or board members have spoken to city council and city council members have indicated that they're, they can work on the rezoning, that's great. What I'm showing you on the presentation is potential challenges. It's not to say that it will be a challenge, especially if there is a partnership, which I know there is with the school board and the city council, then that's an easy challenge to overcome.
Director Shinoski.
So I think for me, I'm, I'm confused about the notion that we haven't done the work because if we have the choice right now to either surplus the property, in which case the city has the option of purchasing it, rezoning it, right? It goes through sort of this hierarchy of who, what, who gets first dibs, second dibs and so on, right? So if there is a desire of the city to develop this into a park or into workforce housing for city employees or any other thing, that is completely on the table. So from my perspective, I feel pretty clear on what the options are and, and, and what's in front of us. And I think that if we want to explore something further, we actually need resource, we need to allocate as a board resources to see what that would look like. That, that's my understanding at this point.
Uh, thank you. That, that does add some clarity, I guess. But what I'm ultimately saying though is I don't want to go out to market at two million dollars. And so if, if we can do this pre-work so that when we do go out to market, you know, it's not at two million dollars, it's at an actual valuation that would match the neighbor's valuation, which happens when you've done the workaround rezoning, right? Once it's rezoned, it automatically can increase the value of the property because now it's zoned for higher housing. That's what the people on the planning commission have told me. That's what council members have told me. I wouldn't know this if people who weren't in the industry didn't reach out and say, hey, this two million dollar valuation is too low and here are all the reasons why. And here is how we can help you.
So we can work to have it, we can work to try to have it rezoned. But according to Yovino Young, right? And we can go out and we can have another appraisal done, right? But according to Yovino Young, because of the fact that there is an active or there is a school site there, there are school buildings there and that it is a unique property for that, that's what the valuation is based on. So I don't know that rezoning it is going to necessarily exponentially change the value of the land. We can absolutely engage with another appraiser to see, but I, I, I can't answer that question.
Just for a bit of context, it might be good in this conversation to know that you're looking at upwards of five hundred thousand dollars to demolish the site. So you're between probably five hundred thousand to a million dollars just to do the demolition work of the school that's there now. I just think that's an important thing to keep in the back of your mind when you're thinking about values and how you use the land.
Director Chang.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I, I'd agree with Director Shinoski. We, we've done a significant amount of communications engagement on facilities on this, and I know there's been some outreach as well. I do understand that there's some questions still because this is a, um, a piece of property where there's a lot of stakeholder engagement around it. It's in right in the middle of a residential area that's considered high value, but it's an unusual property in that there's a older building that's a school site sitting on it. You know, I'm not questioning the, uh, the valuation of two million, but I, I think that there is kind of a, perhaps not a consensus based upon the pros and cons that you presented, which I appreciate. I think you're being transparent. There's significant both pros and cons here. And to get to, I am also a supporter of workforce housing and, and last year I also asked some of these questions that you're referencing here. Because I have concerns about giving up, quote unquote, giving up a property without kind of really trying to see if we can utilize it for programs and services. In particular, where it's hard to get property in, in a, in a town like Berkeley. It is unusual. It's on a, on a seismic zone, a, a, a high level seismic zone, a slide zone that's challenging. It's also challenging in a residential context. There are challenges around getting insurance. I know this personally around seismic zones as well, slide zone. So these are all things to consider. We know that there's some kind of questions around the, the, the property in terms of liability, both insurance and, um, uh, otherwise. But, um, you know, how long would it take to do some type of RFP or whatever analysis is necessary to get like, um, what for this board would be a fuller set of information that they would feel comfortable with? To know whether or not, you know, we've done, make sure we've done our due diligence on the marketing side at least, which is not really the responsibility of facilities, but the marketing side to determine like, is this feasible? And secondly, is there a sense of urgency? I just want to make sure I understand, is there some urgency, you know, with regard to the property? I know that you need to board it up to make sure there's not an attractive nuisance. I've been students going there and we've been getting emails from constituents and from council members that I'm concerned about. But you know, you really want to make sure to seal that up and, you know, I want to hear if facilities feels that that's reasonable to be able to seal it up in a manner that no one can go there while it's going through any additional process such as RFP.
Yeah. So we have sealed it up. We've actually, we've plywooded windows on the inside, on the backside of blinds so that it doesn't create a visual nuisance for the neighbors. We've put metal screens on the glass on the outside of the doors that had been broken where we replaced the glass. We've made some of the doors that were easier to open, we've actually sealed shut from inside and we continue to have people to break in. So unfortunately, short of really creating a visual eyesore for the entire community and just boarding this thing up completely from the outside, we're always going to have a little bit of exposure there and we're doing everything we can to make sure that it is locked down. But it does create an opportunity, right, for places, whether it be kids or adults. For places, whether it be kids or adults, to hang out and create vagrancy, right? I- in regards to the question about the RFP, I I want to make sure I understand. I need to check for some clarity. Are you asking about an RFP to do a feasibility study from a workforce housing or from a developer in just in general, as far as how do we increase the value of the land?
I guess I'm, you you know, I'm I'm thinking out loud with you in terms of what's the most effective way so that this board can have an understanding of the, what could be quote unquote, the true value of it in the marketplace? You know, the you have a, um, appraisal value, but I think they're thinking about a value in terms of possible development as much as that suggests a significant amount of work and possibly problems with, um, getting, uh, funds to do so, such as a measure O type of fund, which would take some time, which I, which is why I'm asking about this attractive nuisance issue, um, and how that could be taken care, taken care of in the interim.
Okay, so I think it sounds like more of just an interest as far as what a developer's interest or values would be on the property. Um, and as far as how long that will take, I I'm not sure. It's not something that is a school district we would normally do, um, but we can absolutely try to engage with some developers. The the other piece was you asked about if there was any sense of urgency uh, in i- beyond the exposure issue that it creates because of the fact that we do have people who continually break into the site. The other piece is that it, right now, we have it listed as storage, um, and we are using it for some storage, but again, having surplus land does create the possibility that SFP will set the school facility program, will say you are no longer eligible for state funding. The and I'll just, the the one example that I've given the board this evening about potentially thirty eight million dollars to go into the queue is one of the things that we've talked about in facility subcommittee as well as with the board level is the state architect has said, in order to do the little theater, which is already in design because it was absolutely needed programmatically for the high school, they were going to require a mandatory, or they are going to require rather, a mandatory seismic upgrade of the community theater. For that, there is twenty eight million dollars in state funding that we can capture for for the seismic and about ten million that we can capture for urban density. That's nearly forty million dollars of a seventy five million dollar construction project. So that project there, because they are tied together from a financial aspect, that project there is a huge liability for the district because we know that there are major structural issues with those buildings. Without the state funding, unless we were to, unless the board would really start considering canceling significant amount of other projects in the bond, you cannot, you simply can't afford to do it. We need to be able to rely on that state funding. So if the board were to choose to just, you know, leave Oxford, right? It does potentially jeopardize that. Now, I bring that up not to try to force a decision. One, we're not here to have a decision tonight, and two, that's not my place. But I bring that up because it's absolutely my responsibility to make sure that the board understands that.
Director Shanaskey.
Just one request for the superintendent, um, and that is that maybe we can gather the information about the community members reaching out about rezoning and valuation because I've not received any of that information. Thanks.
Um, if there aren't any other, any additional questions, um, from the board, uh, I just, as was mentioned just a second ago, want to remind the board that this is merely, that this is a discussion item tonight. We are not up for action, but I think, um, that the the two of you are walking away from this evening's discussion with a couple of next steps. Um, and if you need us to get tighter on our asks before we, uh, depart from this conversation, please let us know. But I think that you all are pretty clear on some of the things that we are interested in, ranging from communication with the city, see what those interests are, um, additional opportunities to, uh, look at, uh, the the value and appraisal, um, and engagement in terms of, uh, community engagement in terms of, uh, the requests that were made from, uh, Director Chang and I and, um, uh, Director Babbin. And so with that being said, thank you all so much, uh, for for this presentation. We know that this is kind of a a challenging and critical, but also necessary conversation to have um, as we make a really, really huge decision and a decision that has been years in the making since the beginning of twenty seventeen, I believe, twenty, yeah, twenty sixteen, maybe. I think the first time we had the present seventeen, first time we had the presentation to the board, or was that twenty eighteen?
We closed Oxford in twenty twenty.
Right, after the presentation that was given to the board, uh,
On the landslide.
On the landslide, which was in twenty seventeen.
It, so I believe they commissioned the study in twenty seventeen.
Thank you.
The findings of the study, I believe, were twenty nineteen. I joined the district in the end of eighteen.
Yes.
So, yeah, the findings came after, but I think you're right. I think it was twenty seventeen when it was commissioned.
Thank you. And so it's been a long time coming for this conversation, um, not just for the district, but for also the Oxford community members who have come out to advocate, um, at every, every step of the way. And so, uh, we look forward to the conversation. We also look forward to the work that the two by two committee will hopefully do on behalf of the board um, to, uh, to learn more about this opportunity. So thank you all so much, and we look forward to seeing you back again. I'm sure at that time, uh, our discussion will lead to a vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now move to item fourteen point one, which is the LCAP Development and Recommendations. And we have, uh, forty five minutes on the clock for that presentation. And so, um, we will begin as quickly as possible. We you know what? It is probably best, I I was hoping that, um, we wouldn't have to, but it is probably best that we go ahead and try to extend the meeting, uh, right now. And so is there a motion from the Board of Education to extend this evening's meeting to eleven thirty, uh, with the hopes that we will be able to, um, take care of all of our business before then?
I move to do so.
It's been moved by Director Chang. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Director Shanaskey. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposers have the same sign, abstentions. Hearing them, the ayes have it, the motion passes, and we will extend the meeting to eleven thirty. Uh, at this time, we will receive our presentation for the LCAP Development and Recommendations. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Uh, good evening, uh, members of the board, superintendent. Um, I am Jill Hogan Dyke, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. I'm joined here by newly mentored Dr. Stupin, our Director of Categorical Programs, um, and Doc, and soon to be Dr. Ruth Still Brown, um, who's our Director of Brea, and we are joined online, um, by Joel Rabbin, who's been our outside consultant for, um, supporting some of our LCAP development work. Uh, we are here this evening, um, uh, because part of the board policy indicates that no later than the second board meeting in April that we will share recommendations for the, to the board for feedback as we head into the development process for the LCAP. So our intentions for the presentation tonight is to share a quick overview, um, for members of the public about the LCAP. We are going to provide, um, uh, an overview of the feedback from the student, family, and staff and community survey. Um, you got part one of our educational partner stakeholder slash stakeholder, um, feedback when we presented on the strategic plan on March twentieth, because we shared an overall summary of the in-person session. So we'll focus on the survey for tonight's presentation. And then we're going to share some recommended concepts for the new LCAP for the twenty four twenty for twenty four, twenty twenty seven. Um, we want to be able to get your feedback, um, on these concepts before we move forward to draft the LCAP because we don't want to get too far down the road and then, um, have to shift gears when we know that, um, we've got a quick turnaround, uh, between the last two board meetings of the school year. Uh, we'll also just share a brief highlight about some budget considerations and then next steps and connected work. He he can, yes, in case there's questions. All right. So first, we're going to start with the overview, and I will turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, um, I'm going to go over, is it this button? Here. Liz might have to help us. It's not working. Well, I'm going to start by going over the overview of the LCAP. Oh, there you go. Oh, back one. Okay, there it is. So, um, basically, um, BSD receives, um, LCFF funds or Local Control Funding, um, Formula Funds. And as a result, a requirement of that is that districts have to, um, um, complete an LCAP or a Local Control Accountability Plan. Um, the LCAP is a three-year, on a three-year cycle, and it connects student needs and actions and services that support the improvement of student outcomes. Um, it is a three-year cycle, but districts are required to, um, update the LCAP annually. Um, in addition to that, CDE, the California Department of Ed, has, um, defined eight priority areas that must be addressed within the LC, within the district's LCAP to, um, support student success. Um, we'll be touching on those eight priorities a little bit later in the presentation. Slide. So, oh, oh, there it goes. Okay, so a little bit about the twenty four, twenty seven LCAP. As I previously stated, the LCAP is a three-year cycle. Um, the current twenty, the current LCAP that we are in right now is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty four LCAP, um, which was built on BSD's mission, vision, and goals for our students. So each year, the district reviews the, um, progress in meeting our students' needs by looking at data, gathering feedback from students, families, staff, and community. And then together, all of these portions, um, guide the district in the overall direction of the program services and budgets that will be included in the LCAP. So I know the slide, um, we've seen before, but what I wanted to show again is the twenty twenty four LCAP timeline. As you see, um, right now, where the green arrow is showing is where we're at right now, and it's where we're preparing the budget, engaging our educational partners, taking the time to write the LCAP and providing a draft. Um, the next segment will obviously come in May and June, and that's when we present the LCAP to our partners and seek for board approval. So here you see our, um, district's LCAP as well as our school site SIPSA goals. And so, um, our mission in the four E's of excellence, equity, engagement, enrichment, tell us what we want our students to achieve and experience. Um, our LCAP and school plans, um, lay out the best thinking on how we're going to achieve that. Um, here you can see the five LCAP goals that we have currently for this, um, twenty three, twenty four year. And part of the work that the district has done is to engage our educational partners, um, on these goals and how they feel they're, if they're still relevant. So the next part of our presentation is the feedback from our educational partners. Um, for here, like, um, you see that since twenty twenty one, we've, um, conducted a lot of stakeholder, I mean, educational partner engagement. Um, the message that we received from our educational partners, if they, they've already provided a lot of feedback, they want to know what's next, right? So we understood that message, and we used all of the previous, um, feedback that we received from the engagement sessions um, as a starting platform for the engagement that began, um, in January of this year for the next LCAP cycle. So, beginning in January, like I stated, um, we conducted strategic plan, LCAP and strategic plan engagement sessions. There were three in-person sessions and two virtual sessions. Um, at these sessions, folks that were in attendance were able to look at data, ask questions, you know, um, and provide feedback on the data. They were also provided seven themes that were created from the previous feedback that we received um, from our educational partners, and they were asked questions such as, did we get the theme correct? Was there anything that we were missing? Was there anything they felt positively about? Were there areas that they felt that, um, were need, we needed to improve on? In addition to that, a survey was also provided, um, and we received one thousand two hundred and sixty survey responses.
Yeah, I just want to say one note. So that in-person engagement session feedback were the slides that we looked at at the March twentieth board presentation. And just for reference, we included all of those in the appendix for this presentation so that it's it's all together.
Thank you. Okay, here, what we wanted to show is a question that was asked of the respondents, um, of the survey, um, was how relevant they felt that the current LCAP goals were or are today. So as you can see, goals one, two, and three received a pretty, pretty similar responses, and around eighty percentish of the respondents felt that the goals were still relevant today. Um, in regards to goals four and five, um, you can see that sixty five-ish percent of the respondents felt that these two goals, goals four and five, um, were still relevant today. Um, so in the next few slides, what I'm going to do is go over the feedback that we received from the survey in regard to the, how the respondents felt, um, what is working well within each specific of, um, each one of the five goals, um, as well as, um, areas of improvement. So for feedback, for goal one, which is, which refers to high-quality, um, instruction and curriculum, what's working is diversity and inclusivity, college and career readiness, and the quality of instruction. Areas of improvement that were noted were inconsistencies in schools and classrooms to, um, and racial predictability, support for advanced and struggling students, engagement and rigor, and communication and inclusivity. For goal two, which is about providing necessarily, necessary and timely academic interventions, what's working, um, is what what they stated was working is timely intervention, supportive teachers and staff, specialized programs, um, areas of improvement are consistency across schools, early identification and intervention, resource allocation and staffing, communication and transparency, and focus on advanced and struggling students. For goal three, which is, um, about safe, welcoming, and inclusive school climates, um, what is working is commitment to inclusive inclusivity, welcoming atmosphere, and areas of improvement, um, safety concerns, inclusivity, and equity challenges, resource allocation, and communication and engagement. For goal four, which is about using local and state measures to assess student progress, what's working is data utilization, program evaluation, assessment frequency, support for special programs, communication and reporting, areas for improvement, understanding clarity, evaluation of program effectiveness, assessment relevance and overload, equity and support distribution, and use of local assessments. And for goal five, um, which is increased access to school for our unhoused students, what is working is the commitment to diversity, support for unhoused families, programs and communications, and dedicated staff. Areas for improvement were transportation and access to school, data and transparency, consistent support and policies, resource allocation, and community and government collaboration.
So as you can see, there was a, there was a lot of information that we synthesized across the twelve hundred responses. Um, and there were a lot of themes there that were also consistent with the themes that had, um, had had surfaced through a number of other stakeholder engagement. Um, we were were also cognizant that in some areas, similar things were being identified as what's working. At the same time, they were being identified for areas of improvement, which really speaks to how we can get better about providing a level of consistency for program and services for our students. So this next section is going to be on recommendations that we have for the LCAP, and we're going to be looking at that in three areas, the goals, the actions, and the metrics. Um, for the goals, it's important that we circle back to the eight state priorities. This is an area that the California Department of Education is going to expect shows up, um, more clearly in our next iteration of the LCAP. They've added a specific section in the LCAP to accommodate for that. Um, and so you can see these eight priorities here, everything from student achievement um, to parent engagement, to college and career readiness. It's also important to note that these eight state priorities come with a set of required metrics that we're going to need to include in the measures, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that in the context, um, of this presentation. So hold the eight state priorities. Um, when we presented, uh, it in March, uh, on the twentieth for the board meeting on the strategic plan, our superintendent shared an organizational structure framework um, for, uh, the strategic plan in the context of identifying pillars and priorities that would frame a strategic plan. Um, and so we've taken a stab at a first draft at some of those pillars and priorities that would frame a strategic plan because we felt that was going to be really important for understanding and and drawing a through line for alignment with the LCAP. We are in a situation where the LCAP development is on a very specific timeline, and that is going to come before the board in advance of a strategic plan, so we didn't want to be too far off. Um, but in a world where an educational organization is identifying pillars, there's a high likelihood that one of those pillars is going to have to do with ex, uh, academic excellence. Um, another pillar around wellness and belonging, uh, parent engagement, talent and culture, and then fiscal, uh, responsibility, um, and the systems components. Um, so we took a stab at those five areas here and started to flesh out in very draft form what some of those priority areas would be. what some of those priority areas would be, and then started to think about how that lined up with the required eight state priorities. So in the context of that thinking, what we are looking at is taking the current five LCAP goals, and we're going to transition to three. So this is the recommendation we're going to have you, we can stop at the end of this section to get some input before we move to actions. But we're looking at moving into Goal 1, which is really combining what is currently Goal 1 and Goal 2, so that we're putting the academic or high-quality instruction alongside of the academic interventions. It's really difficult, particularly as we're trying to track progress, to decouple the high-quality instruction with the interventions that we want to support. And there's a lot of duplication across the LCAP, because they've been separated out. We also need to include the assessment component in that bucket of work. So the recommendation is to pull those together, maintaining a Goal 2 around wellness and belonging, which is our current Goal 3, and then adding a goal around partnership and engagement. So what that might look like is what you see on this slide. So in the context of this draft set of pillars, that the work of the LCAP would really live across those first three pillars. And what you see here is draft, how might we combine the existing goals and add the new ones? So the black text you see here is existing language and our current goals, and the blue is the modifications and the recommendations. So combining Goals 1 and 2 into a new Goal 1 would be provide high-quality classroom curriculum instruction and assessment that promotes college and career readiness, ends racial predictability, and ensures that all systems are culturally and linguistically responsive to student needs, and provide the necessary and timely interventions to eliminate barriers for student success. It was really important for us to maintain the language around reducing racial predictability, ending racial predictability. That came up in a lot of the comments on the survey with a really clear acknowledgement that it is important and ambitious for us to hold that and a recognition that we have not yet achieved that. Goal 2, which is our current Goal 3, remains the same. And then some draft language around a parent engagement goal in terms of strengthening partnerships with family, school, staff, and community to promote successful outcomes for students. So I'm going to stop there with the goals to take any feedback, and then we can transition into the actions.
Are there any questions from the board? Any places for feedback on the specific goals? I'll share. So I know that in the past, the board has given directions or made recommendations to shift goals or even the space to create new goals. And so I'm happy to hear about the merger. But were there any other recommendations for new goals that were maybe not presented today? And then, you know, in your LCAP presentations or your LCAP engagement work with our community, were there any other recommendations for new goals that we maybe did not get here?
The only one that came, I mean, the big one that came up was around program evaluation. And I think it's important for us to recognize that, for us to acknowledge that we hear that. It came up in the stakeholder engagement sessions. It came up in the survey feedback, and it comes up out at our parent advisory body groups. And I think if we go back to that structure of the strategic plan, what we're looking at, the program evaluation component, really should live in the context of the strategic plan. I think there are some things that were placed in the strategic plan because we did not have an, some things that were placed in the LCAP because we did not have an overarching strategic plan. And that program evaluation component, we believe, really should live in the strategic plan. Yep.
Director Babett? Thank you, and thank you so much for all this thoughtful thinking and data diving into all the survey results and being able to present it to us with clarity. I do have suggestions based on primarily our use of the four E's, right, equity, excellence, engagement, and enrichment. And so for me, as I look at the thought of high-quality instruction and intervention, I'm thinking really with the equity lens, because these supplemental funds are really to provide those stepping stools if you have the visuals, so that everyone can actually see the game of soccer being played, right? And so, and then really promoting the first-level instruction. So I do like the combining of it, but I think with the focus of removing out of being so intervention-focused, but really into improving first-level instruction, the first, you know, eight hours of the day, for example. And I totally agree with you that we do need to have them coupled so that we realize, again, early identification, as was noted, and things that we need to improve on, and really how we're making sure they're being served. For example, you know, we still have huge debates over call-out, push-in methods, right? I could see engagement really being around, you know, the partnership and engagement goal of three, for example, and enrichment being around wellness and belonging, the whole child. But for me, the excellence is where we really focus on accountability and that organizational clarity that's really needed. And so while I understand that program evaluation and being a data-informed culture is something that you guys are also trying to institutionalize as part of first-level instruction, it really is important that we call it out and make sure that we have dedicated resources consistently towards providing program evaluations specifically for these supplemental fund programs. That's been, that was one of the main reasons why we put it in. It's one of the main reasons why our first LCAP plan was really recognized. And it's really one of those areas that we've, we're happy that we're doing better in at this point. So that's kind of my feedback around comments to really kind of help shape people's thinking also in a way that's consistent with the messaging and branding that we are really doing throughout our district.
Thank you for those comments. And then Director Steele Brown is going to talk a little bit about where we are with the evaluation component and how we see that coming into the metrics.
And then I noticed there's nothing specific around homelessness or foster youth. Is that no longer a?
Yeah, I apologize. I should have called that out. So the Goal 5 was a requirement because BUSD had been identified for differentiated assistance. So the good news is, we are no longer being identified for differentiated assistance. However, our students experiencing housing insecurity are still a very vulnerable student population. Where we see that being situated is the call-out of our students experiencing housing insecurity as in the context of the measures that are identified across the previous goals, and that we would highlight them as a focal group as we're looking at those measures.
Director Shavaski?
Yeah, I agree with Director Babett's comments. The one concern I have about the LCAP Goal 1 is that it's so meaty. So it's like, there's so much there that I wonder if it becomes difficult to actually monitor, difficult to assess, and then ensure that we're actually achieving all of those things. So that's just my concern. And I know that you have more to the presentation. So I'm happy to wait and see if that concern remains later. But that's my initial sort of the action. Thanks.
I just want to acknowledge that I think that that concern has definitely come up in the conversations as we've been going back and forth. And so I guess what I will say is that we have had an LCAP that has separated those two things. And I think it's been hard to look at the totality of what we're looking at to Director Babett's earlier point. What is it that we're looking at for strong Tier 1 instruction? And then what is the support? So we do recognize that this is going to make for a meaty goal. But the idea here would be that we would then cluster the actions so that if we had, you know, math curriculum and supporting teachers in math, in professional development for math, that that's in that sort of same constellation as the math intervention and support, so that when we were looking to evaluate that program, we were looking at those two things together.
Director Chang, do you have a question? No, okay. I appreciate that answer to the question because, you know, from an instructional perspective, it does make sense to group the two. However, when you, I think Director Babett alluded to this. When you think about the LCAP and who the LCAP was intended to serve, that intervention piece is a major piece. And so I understand why school districts are calling it out by itself and putting a lot of intentions, a lot of efforts, and a lot of resources specifically in that area. I think from a programmatic perspective, or I'm sorry, from an instructional perspective, it makes sense to group the two. And, you know, from your department, I could understand that, Jill. But I am afraid that intervention may get lost in the Tier 1 sauce. Right? That was kind of nice. Put that on the shirt. But I, you know, I do have that fear a little bit. And if it isn't specifically called out, how do we, or what is the district's intention behind saving or continuing to focus on intervention? I think we've heard a lot of presentations. More recently, I'm speaking to the presentation where Director Albeck joined us, and we talked about our intervention. We talked about the data of our students, and the response was that intervention was, you know, going to be one of the ways in which we support our students. And my response back to that is that the students are already in intervention. And so what more do we need to do for intervention? My fear is that grouping them will cause us to look at it from a different perspective, which is great, but potentially to do less or not reach our capacity for serving our students as it relates to intervention. And so I'm not sure if you want to take the opportunity to respond. It isn't really a question, more so just a statement and my feedback.
And what I will say is, there has been a significant lift over the course of the last year and a half to put more attention on that accountability piece in the context of establishing clear expectations around assessment and then building out EduClima to help us keep track of students. So Ruth can have more details around this. But, you know, prior to the launch of EduClima, which really, we're in the first full year of that, we had individual folks across our sites who are keeping individual spreadsheets on the interventions that they were doing, which made it really hard for us to see what was happening in the system. So we will be getting better. We are getting better at documenting those interventions. And we're in the process of really trying to refine and define our processes for cost teams and SST teams to be looking at data to elevate those conversations in a way that are more data-informed and in a way that enables us to look at the bigger picture across the system for intervention specifically.
Okay, thank you for that response. And so when we think about interventions too, we know that there are a range of interventions that we provide to our students. And so like even in thinking about the African-American success framework, that's an intervention in many different ways. And so I just worry about, you know, what I already mentioned. And so is that, are you all accepting of feedback in terms of separating the two? Are you held, you know, tight to grouping them together? Or are my board colleagues on the same page? And I'd like to hear from you all about your thoughts on the Goal 1 and Goal 2 grouping together. I heard some of yours, but Director Chang and?
Sure. Is it appropriate for me to ask you on the dais then to kind of just clarify, how would they be integrated together? Is that what your interpretation is? Yeah. How, if they're, if they, I understand the reasoning behind separating them and perhaps like a bit of further clarification on the constructive benefits of doing such versus putting them together?
All right. So I guess what I would say is that whether they're together or separate, these are going to be actions that are going to articulate it. It's how it gets formatted into the LCAP, and then how we then can monitor, communicate out, you know, how we're making progress across those actions. So the thought process, again, I gave the example around the math is that, so a good example is that we have an LCAP action right now around math intervention supports. That exact same action, which is the next section of our recommendation, shows up in two places. It's in Goal 1, and it's in Goal 2. We have 68 actions that we're monitoring across the LCAP, and what we're learning is that there are a lot of them that are duplicative. So the idea would be, we're going to streamline those actions, but then we would group and cluster them either by content or by function. You know, we've got to take direction about, I mean, really, the crux of this is taking direction about what we think the goals should be so that we can do that work of mapping the critical actions that would help us achieve those goals. So we can, I mean, so this is why we're asking for feedback, because we don't want to build out an LCAP, and then it comes to you for first reading, and we get the direction to put them together or move them apart, because this is going to be the next big lift, is how this gets built.
Director Babett?
Thank you. I just want to first recognize that they're in multiple places at the currently, just because they're reaching the goals. The services reach both goals, right? So it's not as if it's duplicate work or monitoring. It's still the same monitoring work. Now, it's probably more work for, because she has to fill out all the reports. But what I would say is that if it's, again, under the lens of equity, now it's directing those funds to actually target the SED student needs, right? Our ELL learners' needs. And so that's why I think, coupled with Director Shavaski's comment, that, you know, when it's so long and so meaty, and it just sounds like, this is what we're supposed to do anyway. We're supposed to provide high-quality instruction, right? We've always been doing intervention. It doesn't really ring true to how these supplemental funds are supposed to really improve services that, you know, new and improved services for students. So I think under the equity lens, you could still have the two sections as Director Brown is referring to, but really keeping in mind that the target is to create those pillars is what's important for me.
Director Shavaski? You don't want to chime in on that? Okay. If it's okay, well, I think you got the feedback that you needed from the board. And we are also on Slide 21 of 60 with less than 30 minutes left in this evening's board meeting. So just want to make everyone aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chides? This next section is going to be about recommendations for concepts for the actions of the LCAP. And really, again, this is working to streamline. I think it's important to remember that across the district's initiatives and plans, we have about 240 actions that we're monitoring. So I definitely hear you, Director Babett, about the importance of why it showed up twice. But from a perspective of how staff is able to monitor intervene, the way if we can streamline down to fewer actions, then it avoids some of that redundancy, which I think will make us more efficient. So keep that peace in mind as we look at these proposed concepts for our LCAP revisions. So we're going to, we have a recommendation here to consolidate. So we're going to, we have a recommendation here to consolidate duplicate actions. I'm going to show you a couple of examples. We have a couple of actions to remove from the LCAP. We want to consider the removal of some BSEP funded actions. Again, I think the sense was some of these actions relative to BSEP were included in the LCAP because we didn't have a strategic plan to hold for the bigger picture. And we want to revise staffing actions to the purpose of the position. And so we'll talk to you a little bit about what that means. In terms of the duplicate actions, there are a couple of them. Trying to do this. Yeah, okay. Well, I went too much. We have duplicate actions. I talked about the math support classes, the teacher and leader of Color Network, the Classified Pathway, Family Engagement and Counseling and Support. So I understand logically why this showed up in multiple places in the LCAP. But the idea would be where do we consolidate those efforts? Ultimately, we're reporting on all of them, but we wouldn't have to duplicate that twice. And so this is just text that's pulled from the current LCAP to demonstrate that for the most part, it's the exact same language across those things. So that would be a recommendation. And the second recommendation, I'll just go, is around discontinued actions. We have tech, an item in the LCAP that really came out of COVID to provide Chromebooks and hotspots for students. That's work that we're still doing, but it was specific action toward the pandemic. And it's now built in in another function through our IT department. There's also a written in action for English learner supports for summer school specific that says this action is using carryover funds. So there are other actions in the LCAP that identify summer supports for English language learners. So we would put those all together and not call out the carryover component. These are some examples of the BSEP funded actions that we are considering removing from the LCAP. We have a whole process of accountability and monitoring through our PNO team. So we feel confident that 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 process will continue. But library supports, music, VAPA, instructional technology and consent education piece seems like these are things that are whole departments that are funded wholly by BSEP that we can remove from the LCAP because they would, they live elsewhere. And then finally, we talked about this revised staffing action. So I just gave you a couple of examples here. We have a lot of actions in the LCAP that name specific positions. So for example, two point one, provide literacy coaches to all sites. And there really is this reflection in understanding that the action itself is not providing that staff member, but the work that we have asked them to do and that they're responsible for. So we really want to reframe those actions more toward the verb of what we want adults in the system to be doing to support our students and not the position itself. All right. So those are the four areas and we'll take any feedback that you have on those as concepts.
Concepts make perfect sense from, to me, no feedback on my end, Director Shinaski?
I just for my own education, because this is the first time that I'm really going through this process. So when you're saying things like we're going to remove items from the LCAP because they're funded elsewhere, what's the rationale for that? I mean, if it's, if it's really part of the goal and fits within the goals of the LCAP, why remove them? Just for that reason. So what I will say is so at its base level, the one requirement that we have for the LCAP is to include actions and services for our unduplicated student groups. What I suspect has happened over time is absent a strategic plan, there are a lot of actions that have gone into the LCAP because there was no other single district plan that included ability to articulate them. And so what we're saying and the reason why we're situating this in the context of the strategic plan is that the strategic plan is going to hold the big picture and we're going to narrow our focus for the LCAP. Now, we're, there's still some other components that we want to include in the LCAP because as we've been focusing on organizational clarity, these infrastructure implementation, particularly around curriculum and instruction and assessment, we want to make sure that we're still holding on to those because that entire infrastructure is really critical for us to be able to support and monitor students.
Director Babit?
Thank you. This looks good to me. I just would really like to understand how our multi-tiered NTSS system is is really going to be clarified and well documented. Because I see we're talking about tier three, tier two. But again, the accountability to the fidelity within those tiers as well is extremely important.
All right. Thank you. We will move forward drafting with those recommendations. I'm going to turn it over to Ruth Seal Brown and she's going to talk to you about metrics.
Thank you. All right. This is my, this is my first one. Okay, I wrote my notes because I'm so tired. I'm already, I'm going to forget some things. I'm going to read them, which I wouldn't normally do. Okay, so as discussed earlier, this presentation touches on both the overarching strategic plan and how the LCAP aligns with it. Use of data is infused across each pillar of the strategic plan and each proposed goal for the LCAP. As noted on this slide, within pillar five, program evaluation is specifically highlighted in order to ensure that BUSD is assessing whether internal programs and external contracts are providing services that are truly meeting student needs. In the spirit of continuous data-driven improvement in fiscal responsibility, program evaluation is a critical part of BUSD's work and has been embedded in the strategic plan in response to both community and stakeholder feedback. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, oops. So if you look at the strategic plan in its entirety and how the LCAP sits within the strategic plan, then you'll notice that there are essentially two types of information we can gather about our student performance and our programs. Quantitative data, which includes numbers, statistics, rates, et cetera. And then qualitative data, which includes narrative, survey data, feedback from discussions and engagement sessions, et cetera. So as we work to determine which metrics and measures to develop, both of these types of data will be important to include. And most of our current metrics are quantitative in nature. Many will continue to be, as these are generally the required LCAP metrics. But the state has expanded opportunities for more qualitative data to be measured, such as surveys, classroom observations and participant feedback. So what you'll see on this slide is basically some essential definitions of metrics and measures. And you'll see that list on the right are all of our programs or plans that include metrics and measures. So what you'll notice and you've seen other slides presented before, there's a huge intersectionality between each of these different accountability measures across the LCAP, the site SIPs and some of our various initiatives. And essentially, the strategic plan is a home for all of them, but some will have overlapping metrics, some will have different metrics. So it's, there's an awful lot of data and measuring in terms to make sure we truly understand if we're meeting our goals and if the actions we defined are actually meeting those student outcomes we're looking for. Next slide, please. So this slide shows you the intersection between the student level data that we're currently getting really good at analyzing and then the next steps which are looking at that programmatic evaluation. So you've heard me talk before about building out our infrastructure for data systems over the last two year, two years, and we've really gotten to a point where we can see student performance in a way we have not been able to do in the past. So we can see student performance, we can see student growth. And there will be many measures in the LCAP that also connect back to this data. So those first three boxes in the green arrow really reflect what the LCAP will include. The strategic plan is going to focus on those additional two boxes of the orange and pink, which is our improvement cycles for program evaluation. So we really had to build out our foundational systems first and make sure we truly could see student learning to then scaffold up to a program evaluation program where we could see which of our programs are generating those student learning growth points. Because the two kind of live on top of each other. It's, we had to get our student data right first and really in improve these tools so we could look at it before we then start to assess which of our programs are actually having the impact on student learning. If we don't have that data first, we can't assess if our programs are working. So if you look at the next slide, I'm shifting now to specifically LCAP data. So across the LCAP, the state identifies eight basic priority areas, which I'm going to talk a little about in the next slides. And then our job is to come up with the metrics that we're going to use to measure our performance on those priorities. So I am not going to go through all twenty eight or even all eight. I'm just going to give you one example, which is on the next slide. So goal one is that large goal that Jill was speaking to in terms of combining the previous LCAP goals, one and two. So that now touches at least four of those state priorities. There are two listed on this slide and then the rest of them come in the next slides. But essentially, the state has done two things. They've either said, here's a metric you must use, or here are metrics you can choose or develop your own. So what you'll notice on that right hand side under required metrics is it either says, this is the metric. These are the ones the state tells us we must use, or it will say there's choice or we can develop a new one. So for priority one, which is basic services, you'll see there, there is a clearly defined state metric to measure those two things. Within priority two, there's a lot more flexibility in terms of how we measure our ability to implement state standards. And as you go through the next slides, you'll see there's either a required metric that's written or there's a choice or the opportunity to develop a new metric. So if we can just sort of slowly, but I'm not going to speak over them and you can also see the slides. If we can just kind of go through the next few, I think there's maybe eight. Yeah, these are the goal one metrics. There's a lot in there. Then this is goal two, which covers priority one and five.
Director Russo Brown, let me just let you know. So I know that you want to go a little bit faster in the interest of time, but I'm going to tell you what we're probably going to have to end up doing because we have less than ten minutes left and we still need to leave another opportunity for public comment, should there be one. So what we'll probably have to do is table this item to the next meeting to continue it so that we don't rush through because this LCAP conversation is really critical and important. And so what we can do is we can take about five more minutes for this presentation, then move to the second opportunity for public comment and see you all back again with this presentation. I'm sure there is a special meeting that will be put on the calendar soon. And so hopefully we'll be able to see you then. If not, I trust the president and the superintendent or their designees to to agendize this for the future. So let's take about five more minutes and then we will see this again. That does require a motion from the board, however, is there a motion to do exactly what I recommended?
I'll move to do what you recommended.
Move by Director Shinaski. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Cheng. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of I to table this meeting, table this presentation to the next meeting.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
So I don't think we were going to ask for specific, these are currently organized around the three goal recommendations. It was really more information for you to understand how we were going to take the required measures and match them with our, with our goal structure. So if this ends up being three or four goals. So I don't think there was much more that you wanted to add to that unless you all had any comments and then I can close out quickly.
Just, just as we are thinking about going forward, the goals, how we can also incorporate high expectations as, as a really, you know, specific action that we need to do. And then I do, I definitely like the communication plan that I saw somewhere in here around like being intentional about our communication strategies. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm trying to click to the end. Yeah, and we are also happy to take any comments that you have about the metrics offline, if that's easier to. So just quickly on the LCAP budget considerations, we have a projected budget. We have a supplemental budget of about five point six million dollars. And our current calculations around expenses for the coming year are five point eight, which does not include the body of work that we had identified using LCAP carryover with. So we are going to be agendizing this as a discussion item for SPAC next week to explore some potential funding options. What you see here in red are recommendations that came out of our advisory bodies last year in specifically to support services for our English language learners. So we'll be coming back to you with that information. And then finally, just to close out on connected work. Again, what we're hoping that you saw through the context of this presentation is that we're really trying to keep our eye on the strategic plan. How do we narrow our focus on the LCAP so that we can concentrate efforts toward the specific student groups this entails? At the same time, recognizing that we've got a system that we are working to build in terms of the infrastructure that's needed to support the academic and social emotional wellness of our students in the context of the LCAP. Again, sort of draft concept for the strategic plan and really focusing those four Es on the development of graduate profile, which will also help provide some level of focus as we're, as we're more clearly defining what we hope our students to experience in our BUSD schools and the knowledge, skills and dispositions that we want them to have when they graduate from BUSD. And that's it.
What directors, do you have any more questions in the two minutes that we have left for this presentation? Director Shinaski?
Just super quickly, something I would like to see us improve upon and I see a lot of language around career readiness. I think we do a really good job of our, with our CTE pathways and the fact that they're all A through G aligned and it's wonderful. But we have many students that graduate that don't go to college or go to college and then don't complete. And I don't know, I don't see a lot of engagement around career pathways. Yeah, and so understanding more about how we really engage with that. I see career fairs every once in a while, like a CTE career fair. But I think that students that graduate and are not interested in a four-year college path are not necessarily getting the tools that they need for another option that I know of. So, yeah.
Is there a response to Director Shinaski's question or just taking notes? Okay, thank you. In that same breath, on the college side, we have a lot of our students who graduate and are ready and excited about the world of college, but don't necessarily have the A through G requirements that allow them to be CSU or UC eligible. And so while we are looking at career readiness for our students, we also want to continue to look at college readiness and not, you know, get loose sight of that, especially as it's been seen in a lot of our past graduating classes. A number of students who graduate A through G ready can can definitely take a place, can definitely increase. And so having a focus on that. Any other directors have any other direction that they want to provide? Okay. Well, thank you all so much for your presentation and thank you for wrapping it up so quickly. Sorry to have rushed you. Thank you. At this time, the board will now move to second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for a second opportunity? Yes. You may please approach. You can have two minutes for public comment.
Okay, thanks. I'm a BUSD parent. I'm bringing to your attention something. Okay. My name is Shirley Lickman. Last Thursday during second period, ninth graders at Berkeley High attended a mandatory assembly with a focus on the food justice poetry tour and an emphasis on type two diabetes and environmental justice. It sounds like a terrific and valuable assembly and I'm sure a lot of it was. Unfortunately, the speakers and or organizers of this assembly exploited the event to transmit distorted narratives, factually incorrect mentions of Gaza or Israel and performed some questionable indoctrination practices. I will go back to describing some of the wrongful facts if I have time. Let me just mention that the assembly included enthusiastic chants by its speakers or organizers for the people, for the land to which students were encouraged to join along and apparently many did. And occasionally the organizer of these chants also added free Gaza. This is not about students hearing uncomfortable viewpoints or other narratives. This is about distorted narratives at a mandatory assembly culminated by chants that are the exact opposite of teaching to end critical thinking. Or to be honest, remind of indoctrination practices found in places Berkeley High School is likely not wishing to be associated with. Unfortunately, when I emailed the principal last week about this assembly, despite other emails as well from other parents that with similar testimonies on behalf of their children, the response I received was that there were no chants and no regard to my points regarding the content of the assembly. All right. It is not okay to cancel reports from multiple students. All right. Ran out of time. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. And thank you for joining us. Are there any extended board member comments? Okay, we have three, we have three hands online and so we can take one online comment. And for those of you who did not get the opportunity to speak, please always email your comments to the Board of Education. Can you please call the first hand that you see? Thank you. If the first hand that you see is unavailable, do you want to go to the next speaker?
Hi, this is Eileen Lee. Were you waiting to hear from me?
Yes, please. Go right ahead, Eileen.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Eileen Lee. My PhD is in education and family studies. On February twenty three of this year, a letter to families from an ethnic studies teacher states, "We're not at liberty to share the curriculum directly with families as per the practice we use with all curriculum." Board members, I hope you know that this practice seems to be a clear violation of California Ed Code, Section five one, one zero one, which states, "The parents and guardians have the right and should have the opportunity to participate in the education of their children." And it includes item eight specifying the right, and I quote, "to examine the curriculum materials of the class or classes in which their child is enrolled." So I ask you, please, why does BUSD comply with this statute? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, for your comments. This ends our second opportunity for public comment. There are no board, additional comments from the board. And so our meeting will adjourn tonight at eleven thirty, one PM. Thank you all so much and have a good evening.